Okay, good afternoon. It is Thursday, August 11th, 2022. This is a school board workshop. The time is 2:00 PM. And we, today on the agenda, we have our review of August 16th, regular agenda, for 30 minutes. We have health services opt-in process for 15 minutes. Review of the board bylaws with Niola, two hours. And then, of course, we have the good of the order. And so, we will begin with Dr. Bernier and the review of the August 16th agenda, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members, for your questions. We really appreciate getting them. This was a little different structure for us this time. The board agenda was, at least in draft form, ready a little bit earlier. And we're used to having a little bit more time to get these ready. So there will be a couple items that we'll have to respond to you in greater depth, depending on your follow-up questions via the board briefing and the board update. So our first question today comes from the consent agenda of academic services. It's concerning the approval of the contract with Power School for the Naviance licenses and subscriptions.
Can you get your control and you guys out there?
One second. Our emergency operations call has decided it wants to call me. I apologize.
While he's doing that, I just want to remind the board that what the, the way the system is right now, when you go to speak, you push the buttons. When you are not speaking, please mute your mics. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I apologize. Was the approval of the Naviance licenses and subscriptions for the 22, 23, and 23, 24 school year, the question was, what is the value of this career software program? Reviews indicate that there have been some issues. Who are the 50,001 students? Naviance, will Naviance be available for all students in the 6 through 12th grades? So Naviance is this comprehensive suite. As you well know, you all received a video presentation and a voiceover. We were going to cover this at the last workshop, but you asked for a kind of inventive way from our curriculum services team and our academic services team to cover this information. So we did a voiceover PowerPoint to all of you. This is in a really amazing suite of software that allows for parents, schools, and students to connect regarding, you know, a single platform, a pathway not only through middle and high school, but post-high school success and post-secondary success. Naviance has contained within it six big areas or spans six categories of self-discovery, success skills, support network, college planning, career planning, as well as financial planning. It also gives them a great opportunity to access all of the national scholarships and to be available to them at a single click. I think the other part is really amazing to me, and I think was stressed in the PowerPoint and the voiceover. It gives parents a very strong role in helping to review student information. Everything that the student does within the program is also available to our parents, and they have a login and a way to get in. So the Naviance will be available to support 6 through 12th grade students through career exploration and planning tools via a platform related to their academic goals. So as they do social skills, as they look towards self-discovery of where their strengths and weaknesses are, they can interact not only with their counselor, but with their family, and then start developing a pathway and a plan, not only through 6 through 12th grade, but post-transition into post-secondary. So the tool will be used across departments to support our students as they transition from middle to high, and then from high school to post-secondary. I have members of the academic team, if you need them, but I hope that answer would be sufficient.
Ms. Fisher, I know that that was your question. Did you have any other comments regarding that?
No, I'm just, in looking at the reviews and stuff like that.
Please make sure your, is your mic on? I know it's going to be some use here.
Yes, in looking at the reviews, I noticed that some of the people who had utilized it had said there were some issues with, with the results. And so, and this is basically an aptitude test, right? I mean, not like, oh, I don't know, Views Attuned, or some of those other programs that we've had in the past. I understand there's more follow-up and more parent involvement and...
As Candace and Jeff make their way down to the microphone, I would share with you that Naviance requires implementation with fidelity. Every software program does. A piece of software is never going to be the answer to all of our planning issues and needs for our children and our families. It's really how it's implemented. And I'll let Jeff and Candace are prepared to handle it.
Sure. Good afternoon, everybody, and thank you so much for the opportunity to talk to you about Naviance. As you saw in the video, Naviance is a platform to really engage parents and students in career and college exploration. I think some of the reviews we're talking about, some of the reviews were about the platform itself, and that's really about the onboarding through professional development. So before we ever brought this into the hands of parents and students, our school counselors, who have also already had the opportunity to see this platform, we would have some intense professional development with them, so they felt comfortable with the platform, and then we could onboard our parents and our students.
And then, just to add to that, one of the pieces, speaking to what you were talking about, Ms. Fisher, students have an opportunity to engage in tools that provide things their interest in, so they can be looking at careers and/or colleges. So not necessarily aptitude tests, there are survey pieces in there, but we get to control all of those pieces, and then families get to see those results as well, and be able to discuss goals with their students as they're filling out what their interests are for post-high school.
So then, it would primarily be the parent, the student, and the school counselor, who would be implementing it?
Correct.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Ms. Tricca?
I love it. Thank you. I wish I'd had this for my oldest. Is it available to families in multiple languages?
Now, I don't know off the top of my head. I know we had that conversation, and I think we were talking about the manner in which we could switch those to multiple languages. So let me get that answer and have it in the weekly update for you.
Is there any other questions regarding this?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you, team. As a reminder to what Jeff said, we'll get not only that in the update, but we are going to republish the voiceover PowerPoint, if you'd like to review it again.
Thank you.
The next question is G3, approval of the service agreement with Soliant Health, LLC. The question is, "Social Work Services by Interns?", question mark. These are social work, master's-level social workers. They're either already licensed with LCSW, or registered clinical interns working on their licensed counselor's social work, postmasters, that are registered with the health department as a clinical intern. We use these individuals and we use this contract in order to help support all of the needs for all of our students, while we still continue to hire our own. This is an area where we've never frozen or stopped looking for our own social workers. This is a contract that we have in order to fill the gap between the numbers that we have already and the ultimate number that we need. The project is currently being funded by Esere Funds. The project's specific to the recovery efforts of re-engaging families and providing those intensive wraparound services. However, the plan is written through 23, 24 school year, and currently, there are no plans to be, extend beyond 23, 24, because we still consider our recruitment efforts and making sure that we can fill the vast majority of these positions through our own recruitment and our own processes. But in the meantime, in order to make sure that we can fill all the gaps, we've identified Esere Funds, and this is a renew, actually, I believe, a renewal of the service agreement. We've used this organization in the past to help us with our social work needs.
Thank you.
Ms. Fisher, was there any other?
That's, that's...
Anyone else? Any questions regarding? Okay, perfect. Thank you, Dr. B. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Kittens?
Okay. And I'm sorry, maybe I zoned out. The Esere Funds part of it, are we able to use Esere Funds to sustain?
Well, the question was about sustainability, and we are using Esere Funds, which we have available through the 23, 24 school year. After that, there are no plans to extend any of these contractual agreements beyond that, but we still are working and hiring social workers every day. So as we find more of our own, we'll need these services less and less.
Okay, thank you. Dr. B.
Next item from the agenda is G6, approval of the contract between the state of Florida Department of Health and the school board of Lee County. The question was to clarify the amount we pay, and the amount paid by the state, and how has the amount changed? The amount paid by the Florida Department of Health is $270,000 each year. This funds six registered nurses for the designated schools, James Stephens, Edgewood, Ray B. Portoff, Colonial, Lehigh Acres Middle, and North Fort Myers Academy. The estimated cost of these positions for the school district is $204,570. That covers the insurance and benefits for the 22, 23 school year. That is an increase from 2018. 2018 was about $150,492. That same cost was 2019. In 2020, it rose to $168,480,000. And then finally, in 2021, it was $187,668,000. So we have continued to see a rise in cost, I think, like we have all seen for just about everything we are purchasing and working with, not only as a school district, but in our personal lives as well.
And if I may, so, and the last amount we paid was 100, and what was that last figure?
In 2021, we paid $187,668.
Okay. All right. I think where I was confused about this was what we paid and what they paid. On this item, when it says budgets, of course.
So we paid, we paid $204,570.
And they paid $270,000.
$204,570. That's to cover the insurance and benefits for the 2023 school year, and they paid $270,000 for those six registered nurses.
Is this something that they are required to do? Is this a program? Is it temporary? Is this something that will not go away, as far as this program? And if you can't answer that now, you can get it back to me.
We'll have to get back to you in the board update. I don't have that specific answer for you, Ms. Kittens, but I know that having registered nurses in these particular schools is critical to their function.
No, and I know it is, but I'm just wondering if there's any caveat there that that $270, that we get from them could go away for any reason.
I'll get the team to follow up in the board update.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kittens. Dr. Bernier?
From the consent agenda of human resources, I point one, approval of the personnel recommendations. The question is, how many of the admin placements were replacing someone who left? We have been doing that work specifically, it's a digger, it's a bigger, deeper dive. HR will need to research the prior employees in those positions, and whether they left or whether they moved to other positions, and we'll have to follow the board. We will have to dig deeper into this, because if we're going to dig into these particular ones, I will actually want to get more of a historical record, because I feel once we dig into this, there'll be additional questions to, what is the trend looking like? So in some cases, we are replacing people who left, but in other cases, people have transferred to other positions, and now we're replacing those individuals who've chosen to go on and work in the district in a different capacity. Can we see a list of vacancies per school? And isn't this information parents should have as well? Yes, we can clearly provide a list of vacancies by school, and we're already prepared to do that and turn that over in the board update. Vacancies are published in the employment opportunities each week. We also have been providing the total number, the overall number of instructional openings by each one of the areas of our district each week, but I know those are generalized terms. There's a great whiteboard inside Suzette Rivera's office that has really great information on, and we keep adjusting the numbers and keep working with the totals, so we have a working scorecard. That just has to get transferred over, and we'll be happy to provide that to you. As to what parents should get, Florida law does require parents need to be notified in writing if their teacher is teaching out of field. So we will still continue that as a state requirement, and we will still continue to do that.
And if I may?
Go ahead, Ms. Kittens.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm aware of the fact that we have to let parents know if a teacher is out of field. And my question basically was, do we let parents know if there's a situation where their child has a temporary teacher, or does not have a permanent teacher? Because, to me, it's almost the same thing. You know, either you have a teacher that's out of field, that's one thing, and if they, if they're going to have subs for a period of time, for whatever reason, it's almost like, you know, do parents need to be aware that there's not a permanent teacher in that seat?
I think parents need to be aware. I would also tell you, having attended several of the open houses, both at the elementary and middle school level, that has been something that principals have been very candid in describing to their specific parents, and telling them exactly what's transpiring and where they are in terms of either finding the teacher, or where that teacher is in our pipeline, and an expected arrival of that teacher to the classroom.
Okay, and that's just what I wanted to get out in the open, so someone has asked about that, so they do know if they're out of field, and if there's not a permanent teacher in that classroom. Thank you.
You're most welcome. Thank you to staff.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, this is kind of a corollary to that, since Mrs. Kittens was asking about vacancies per school. We're going to be briefed pretty soon on lots of new positions, and I'm wondering, I think I noticed that it was 20 minutes that we had that on the briefing, and I know I'm going to have a lot of questions on it, and it's going to kind of blend with what we're talking about here, you know, adding a lot of positions while we still have a lot of vacancies, and just kind of how that all works together. Does that, does that make sense as we?
It does, but I'm, Madam Chair, a little confused. I think, are we, I know we have upcoming in a briefing, job descriptions. These are not new jobs. They're changes within those job descriptions, looking at the minimum qualifications and things like that, but they are not new positions, per se.
Well, the way it was in the briefing, there were two that were listed as new, I believe, and the rest, or wait, no, the opposite, revisions, and then most of them were, were new. And the question I'm asking is, maybe when this is answered about the vacancies, maybe there can be, I see Rob out there, some way that, I mean, if we're adding, or if these are in lieu of another position, that's the point I'm trying to make. We're, we're talking about, we're worried about lots of vacancies in all different areas, and yet, even though they're job descriptions, as long as I've ever been on this board, whenever there's a job description, there will be a new job following closely behind. So I'm just asking if we, when we get the answer to this about vacancies in schools, if it can be, we can also be looking at how all these new job descriptions, which you know will become jobs, impact already existing vacancies?
I will go back through, yes. The short answer to that is, of course, we can do it.
Yeah, okay.
Two things that I think are valuable to the board and to the community. One is that we are not currently advertising jobs that we would be pulling from schools in order to fill.
Okay.
The staff and the chiefs and the executives are very clear and have very clear direction from me, that we will not be pulling somebody from a school building to fill any position of the central office. We've had a couple of minor exceptions to that, because we've had to drive based upon a state grant, there was something very specific for safe schools that we had to do. We had to be in compliance with state law. But as we look for things like science coaches or reading coaches, you normally would turn to your schools. We are not going to pull people from our schools until a principal has an opportunity to have a suitable replacement. If that suitable replacement takes a year to find, then the central office will wait on its position.
Okay, and I just think it would be, again, I realize this is out of the scope of exactly what we're going over now, but I think it relates, that, you know, we probably are going to need more than the 20 minutes, because I know I'm going to have a lot of questions on those, and I think, you know, what you just said now in brief, just touching on my question, will need to be expanded.
We had a request, actually, to look at that agenda and adjust times. We are currently working with Jennifer in order to increase the amount of time and make sure that we're filling the complete number of hours that you have set aside as a board, ensuring that we have some additional time.
Okay, great, because I think it all melds together. Thank you, appreciate that.
And thank you, Ms. Vaughn, and that was something that we did notice, and thank you, Ms. Schaefer, for bringing that, because I know when we looked at it, there were some that were new and some that are existing, but I knew that was going to be a topic of conversation. So thank you. And Ms. Kittens, you had, thank you, Dr. B., for looking at that. Ms. Kittens?
And just one last thing on this, the topic. Superintendent, you mentioned about getting trend data. I don't know, I feel that that's very, very important for us to look if we don't have it. I know it's possibly time-consuming, but it may be time-consuming on this end, but be very helpful to us on the other end, to be able to see, you know, how many people moved within the system, as opposed to how many people left, and how many people moved up, or how many whatever. So that trend information you talked about, I think, is very important.
I appreciate that. I think so, too, and keep in mind that as we think towards the goals of our strategic plan, we've already talked about graduation rate. We'll continue to keep that on your front burner with all of you. We owe you a presentation which is being planned and forthcoming regarding school grades and how we're doing. We have a graduation presentation still coming before you, and I have Rob Dotic already teed up, because there's aspects of the strategic plan regarding vacancies, teacher retention rates, fill rates. So that's when we, while we'll get you the information within the board update, we'll be back in front of you to discuss all of that trend data. So I just wanted to make sure you're aware, we're strategically thinking beyond just a board update, and making sure that you have full information as well, as well as for our public.
Thank you, Dr. B. Thank you, Dr. B. Next, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Jivinelli, you had a question?
This wasn't one of my questions, but I just thought of it. The retirement of Mr. Parfitt, the coordinator for assessment, are you going to fill that position?
We are going to advertise the position, and we'll see who applies. Again, we want to be very cognizant of where our schools are. I don't necessarily believe that will be a school-based position that will come forward, so we want to take the opportunity to look and see who is out there to fill those very large and wonderful shoes. We were saddened by his loss, but everyone deserves an opportunity to retire.
Yeah, I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, and moving on?
The next item is also from the Human Resource Agenda is the approval of the Employment Contract for Assistant School Board Attorney. I'm going to turn this over to Kathy Dupuy-Bruno to handle the response.
I think I have, oh, good, sorry. From Human Resources, Mr. Dotick did provide this response, and then I'll provide my response. The board attorney has been provided a salary range based on enterprise research data for similar positions. The board attorney then negotiates the contract with the candidate. Human Resources does not participate in the negotiation process. Align with that, there was another question from Ms. Kittens. The first question was from Ms. Patrica. The second question from Ms. Kittens is the salary the same as the previous attorney? The attorney's salary is based on the market rate provided by HR. Experience, equity, and contribution to the district are also considered. The salary is exactly the same as the current Assistant School Board Attorney and very close to the prior attorney in Academic Services, who was at $125,000, $125,000, plus $3,000, which was a total of $128,000. The attorney has significant experience representing over 60 children at any given time with educational issues, including enrollment issues, establishing IEPs and 504 plans, student discipline, D.O.A. due process, manifestation determination hearings, custody and dependency matters. The attorney has handled over 30 trials and currently supervises the education advocate for his agency, and he is well qualified for the position.
Okay, do we have any questions regarding that? Ms. Patrica?
What is the range, please?
That would have to be from Mr. Dotick. I don't have that off the top of my head.
Is the 128 the highest from the, from what I recall from the last time, and maybe, Dr. Bernier, we could get it, but I believe that's what it was.
I will have to ask Mr. Dotick to come up to the podium. Bob, if you could get that information, we can come back to this, we can come back to this one in particular for that information.
I think just based on the last time that this occurred, that was like the highest one, though. I'm just, I recall that. Ms. Jivinelli?
Now, this employee is filling which shoes, which attorney?
This employee would be filling the staff academic services position.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions regarding this? So if we could get the figure, that would be great, and I'm pretty sure that's what it was.
Okay.
We're happy to get that. I believe we may already have it.
I'm just, I don't know why I think that is. Is there any other questions regarding that, then? Dr. B?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next is from the Consent and Operations Agenda, approval of the Memorandum of Understanding with the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County. The question is very succinct. Please explain this MOU. The purpose of the MOU is to establish the responsibilities of authority to access the school board's Williams Road Fuel Site in Astero, Florida, seven days a week and 24 hours a day. In the past, this fueling site was used as a very small bus compound for our transportation department. School buses and county vehicles use the site to fuel vehicles. The bus compound was closed years ago, but the site is still used to fuel a few buses as well as county vehicles. A decision by the district was made not to upgrade the fueling equipment due to the minimal use by our buses and instead invest in our other yards. This MOU states that the county now will be solely responsible for the daily operation of the site and for the service, maintenance, inspection, and repair of the upgrades. They do pay for all of their fuel, including a 5% additional fee in order to help support our costs.
Ms. Jivinelli?
Thank you. I just wanted to probably be aware of our collaboration with the Board of County Commissioners and the consent agenda. But I think it's really important that we, you know, have those partnerships and relationships, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier, please.
Next item is K-8, approval of professional services in Clemmons-Rutherford Associates, Inc., CRA for a five-year educational plant survey. The question was, please explain what a plant survey is, and please explain the service, the need, and how it's different than the demographics. So a five-year educational plant survey is a DOB requirement. It's conducted by all school districts on a five-year basis. The point of the survey is to evaluate the educational plants in the school district. The plants, meaning our schools, our offices in our buildings. They also bring forth recommendations to the state for the additional removal of schools, all the other things. The additional removal of capacity and infrastructure improvements, custaldi, tear-down recommendations, etc. The survey is exclusively entered and processed through the FS system, which is the facility's index score.
We're going to love these mute buttons. Please explain a plant survey. The question is for K-8 approval of professional services in Clemmons-Rutherford Associates, Inc., CRA for a five-year educational plant. We had two questions. Was, one was in general about explaining what a plant survey is, and could we explain this service a little bit more? The need and how it's different than the Davis Demographics contract. So the response is, this is a five-year educational plant survey, which is a requirement of the State Department of Education. It's conducted by all school districts on a five-year basis. We are due for our survey. The point of the survey is to evaluate all the educational plants, which are schools and buildings in a district, and bring forth recommendations to the state for additional removal or addition of schools, addition or removal of capacity, infrastructure improvements, custaldi, tear-down recommendations, and this survey is exclusively entered and processed through the EFIS system in the FISH database. What that does for us is it gives us the opportunity to develop what's called a facility index score on each one of our buildings. So while we have been focused on our halfpenny sales tax and we know kind of what we're building for new schools, this gives us a greater opportunity to integrate the needs of our existing schools and determine where they fit also in that capital plan to make sure we are dealing with the neediest schools, i.e. like a Franklin Park. While we're continuing to build new schools, and I know we need them in lots of different areas across this district, we also have to be responsible to the individuals in our community in places like Franklin Park where the building has lived past its lifespan. So as you know, we're swinging that school out to another site, and we'll begin to tear down that building and replace it. So that's what this survey does. It's different than Davis Demographics. They're a firm that specializes in demographic analysis of school districts. Their services include forecasting of student enrollment, tracking residential development, its impact on student enrollment, and analyzing the ability of the district to construct new schools based upon available real estate and density. So they fold together. One is an opportunity for us to look at our buildings, our capacity, and the condition of our buildings so that we can plan appropriately for our capital spend. The other is to integrate that with what's happening in our community by who's moving in, what's being built, where are we going to see the greatest growth, and marrying those two plans together to make sure we're being responsible stewards of the public tax dollar.
Thank you. That was a great explanation. And Ms. Jivinelli?
So much. So thank you for that. Because I think it's really important to understand the two. Also, I don't recall receiving the plant survey from five years ago. Is, can we, can we get a copy of that? And then that way, it would be something to compare, I think it would be something to compare to, once we get the new one. And so I would love to have the old one from five years ago.
We'll make sure that you get a copy of the old plant survey from our team as quickly as possible.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Kittens, did you have a question regarding that?
If this goes too deep in the woods, we can discuss it later, but my question is about facilities index score and capacity. Is, I guess what I'm saying, I would like to be able to see or maybe have a workshop or a quick briefing on what goes into that facility index score versus capacity numbers, and especially based on what we just went through recently, and just to see, I mean, I'm aware of some of it, but how does it all fit together? Are we looking at capacity numbers to build? Are we looking at the combination of capacity numbers and facility index scores? Just kind of baking that cake, so.
It is, it's quite a recipe, to use your analogy, baking a cake. It's quite a recipe to look at a facilities index score. Remember that when we look at a physical plant, we're looking at capacity based upon what FISH says, so many square footage for each one of the students. But when we also define capacity, we're looking at the number of students moving into particular areas and how they drive the need for more classroom space. So that then begins to inform plans like, do we build a new one? Do we add to a particular school site? So yes, there is a plan to bring forward to all of you, a plan, and look at where we currently are in our capital outlay plan, and then integrate this new information and have a deeper dive and deeper discussion related to it.
And prior to that, the kindergarten version of the definition of each of those. I mean, there are some people that know it and understand it. I mean, I know because I've worked with it, but other people don't. And when we talk about how we decide we're building a building and where and when and how, I think if we have it broken down simply, then that would help us going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And on our, the narrative of this, it does kind of like share the chapter, the state statute and all of that, and the little odds and ends in this as well. So that's, that's really good information. Dr. Bernier?
The next item also comes from the same consent part of the consent agenda. The approval is to reject the ITN number N227421DO, fuel pump maintenance, repair, replacement. We noticed that we're rejecting several bids, is the question. Can you advise why that is and why aren't contractors not bidding on our invitations? First, let me explain what this is for the public. This actually was removed from our last agenda. This was an area where we needed to come back because the cost of the estimated costs for doing this fuel work was exorbitant, and we believe we needed to come back and do it a second time because we only had one bidder at the time. So, but the question's more specific about why contractors aren't bidding. So some factors impact purchasing efforts. Clearly, supply chain disruption, whether people feel like they can get the materials in order to bid in a timely manner. There's also impact of a particular commodity or service, for example, the number of vendors that offer a service in Lee County. In addition, the district purchases a service or commodity when we do it for the first time and we put it out there. Contractors don't always comply with the mandatory requirements that are unique to government purchasing, so they, while they may bid, they may not actually do it the right way. So that does force us on some occasions to choose to cancel a solicitation. As promised to all of you, we are revamping now that COVID is over. What I'm referring to is our vendor open house. That is currently now scheduled for September 27th. That'll be an opportunity for subs, subcontractors, vendors, and prime contractors to be together all down in the Kalusahatchee Room to receive information as to what's coming out for bid, what they could be looking for, looking towards the future, and to provide them information about how to bid and to do it correctly.
I'm sorry, Dr. Bernier, did you say September?
Yeah.
September 27th.
Thank you. And then Ms. Jivinelli, please?
Well, that was actually the question, so thank you. And thank you for explaining that. I think it's important for people to know, you know, we're having issues. This is something we've not had a lot of rejection of bids prior to recently, so it's important to talk about it, and hopefully we'll have more vendors bidding. That's my hope. My question would be, is this something that we could piggyback off of, out of another contract and from another district, or, you know, or go out, you know, to another county and, you know, expand our, the miles? Because I think there's a mile, you know, some, if they're within this close proximity of the district, 50 miles or something. If we can expand out to try to, to get a better deal, I don't know. It's just some questions I'm throwing out there.
Certainly will follow up with the people who work in procurement and Susan Malley directly to see whether, now that we are going to potentially move on the 16th to reject this bid, how we could move forward and certainly piggybacking could always be an option or looking for another district who has a similar contract. We'll take that into consideration. It's a great suggestion.
Thank you. Dr. Bernier, please?
K-10 is the approval of Phase 2B total project cost estimate for Amontesera, sorry, Scott Rickenbacher has ruined my ability to pronounce a word. Amontesera Elementary School, formerly known as Elementary J, interior fit-out portion of the new elementary school. So there's several questions here that include, please explain what an interior outfit is. Is this the total cost to build the school? Outside auditor, partial approved phase, can we save money by having RSM audit versus an outside auditor? Who do we use to do these audits? Who is the outside auditor? Do we go out for bid for the auditor? What are the costs that are not included in this phase? And then there's an ask for a breakdown of site costs related to property appraisals, site purchases, site development, and off-site roadwork that was approved in the Phase 2A GMP. So first of all, all interior work is the work other than shell work. Shell work is the foundation, the walls, the roof. Everything else, cabinets, lighting, tiles, carpet, that's, that's the work of an interior outfit. All we've done in Amontesera is we've started to stand up its shell. Everything that else has to be done in that school, and I know the principal just revealed the interior color scheme as well as the mascot. All of that information now has to be purchased and bought, and tiles and colors and everything have to be installed. So that is an interior outfit. Is this the total cost of the school? The total, the total project cost estimate is inclusive of Phase 1, Phase 2A, and Phase 2B costs. We can't really answer whether RSM would cost benefit us because we're not necessarily familiar with both rates. We could certainly investigate that, but I would say to the board, I think there would be a potential concern to hire RSM to do this. That concern would be, they are an employee of the board. When it comes to our construction costs, we are heavily reliant upon our halfpenny sales tax. So we have been using a firm called Carl Riggs &amp; Ingram, or they're known as CRI. CRI is a state-approved vendor for this work, used by the Lee County School District and 13 other school districts. They have been pre-approved for public projects like this, and they're experts in auditing construction projects. There are no appraisals specifically of this particular owned property. The site was purchased on 3/19/2008. The cost of that property at the time was $2.543 million. The site development, I could, and Scott would be willing to do, put that into the board update, we would have to tease out what the site development costs were from the MM Middle School. Remember, when we built the new LAMs, we did the site development for both campuses. So I have to go back to that budget in order to tease out what the site development cost was for that. That would include both the cost for the LAMs site and for the site for Amontesera. And the only required work we had to do was, again, at Richmond Avenue, we were required to put in a turn lane, which was included in the total GMP proposal for Amontesera. And again, we'd have to go back into that Phase 2A and tease out what the actual costs were for that turn lane. So hopefully that answers all those questions regarding the Amontesera total project cost for formerly known as Elementary J.
Thank you, Dr. Bernier. Ms. Kittens?
I think, at least for me, where the confusion lies is that when I click on the one form that's Amontesera, formerly JES Phase 2B, and go down to the bottom and it says total project cost, I think, and maybe I'm missing it, is there a spot on there that says, for this document, Phase 2B, of that 56 million, how much is the cost for 2B? It's like, it's all mixed in together as opposed to if you've got A, B, C, and D phases? It's like, it's all mixed in together as opposed to, if you've got A, B, C, and D phases, and your total is 56, then I should be able to see easily and clearly that Phase A is going to cost this much, and B is this much, and C is this much, therefore 56 is the end.
The total project cost for this particular middle school, I'm sorry, elementary school, I'm confusing with middle because it's normally the price of a middle school. That's what's happening to the inflation of our construction costs. We built Lambs for a little less than this. So that's what's happening to the inflationary cost of construction. I say that to say this, the 56.5 million, if I'm not mistaken, if you look at Phase 2A total, it's 24 million and change. That is part of the 56.5 million. And I just got a thumbs up from the head of construction, so I didn't get that wrong.
Okay, can we, so we're talking apples and apples. Look at Phase 2B, the document that's in Board Docs.
I don't have Board Docs open at the moment.
Oh, okay. I mean, there are two documents in there, and one is the Phase 2B.
What's that total cost, Ms. Gittens, if I may ask you?
That's where I'm confused. Because there's design services, construction costs, ancillary costs, site costs, and then there's total construction with site costs, and total construction cost, which is the 56. So I guess in layman's terms, I can't look at 2B and say, 2B is costing us this amount of the 56 million. That's all I'm saying. I mean, kindergarten version, so everybody understands.
Did you, Scott Rickenbacher, Director of Construction, good afternoon. Did you by chance look at the backup in the agenda, which is the actual total project cost sheet, which describes Phase 1, Phase 2A, and 2B, and breaks it down in its components for a total of $56 million?
Here, this is what the sheet looks like right here. And what you'll see is in our descriptions, in our notes, it calls out the amounts of dollars in each phase that were applied, bringing the total sum to $56 million.
Okay, when I go on Board Docs and I'm looking at this item, the first item says Amontisara Phase 2B.
Well, Phase 2B is the one you're approving.
Is that we're approving today? Right, okay. So for clarity, and I know it's there, as I scroll down, there's all these other documents, but perhaps some way we could have, if you're presenting to us 2B, then show us first, here's the whole thing, now here's 2B. Here's the whole thing, and now here's 3A.
I think.
And I don't know if that's there.
I hear what you're saying.
She's not pulling them all out because they're, even though it says Phase 1, Phase 2, it's all, it's all there together, so you.
Correct, because 2B reflects the entire final total project cost. So in the very first paragraph, that's why you see the 56 million.
Okay.
The public content and the attachments are all of those things you have approved previously at board meetings, providing the money, the dollar value, like in Phase 2A, you approved $24 million, oh, I don't know, five, six months ago. So we attach all that for the public consumption, and those are all the supporting documents that get you to the $56 million number. And to make it easier and simpler to read is why we've always have done these color-coded sheets, and I provide a little bit of Phase 1A, Phase 2B, just to try and help you understand how all the numbers come together. We can certainly adjust things if that makes it easier in the future.
Well, I'm just saying, which one of those documents is the one you're seeing that has the generic with everything?
It'll be called total.
In Board Docs, Ms. Gittens, that would be the first attachment.
That is correct. It'll say total project cost budget estimate.
You'll see line items that carry a parentheses that say 2B, 2A.
The one, when I first click on the first document, the title of it is Total Project Cost Estimate Phase 2B.
They're speaking of the same one, Ms. Gittens.
Okay. But I guess all I'm saying is to make it simple and not have to look for it. If we had it all just in, I don't know, I don't think I'm saying it.
No, what she's trying to say is take away all the other things except for 2B, and have all 2B together. That's what you're trying to look for.
And have one document that just clearly has, you know, not, your brain is like way up here, so.
No, this was a change, because prior to this, I would have just come with the 2B and not have all the other attachments. I was asked by the board to provide all those attachments so they could do it, so.
But what I'm saying, that's fine, but for public consumption, when you're showing 2B, we should easily be able to have right next to it, here's everything else. Not all, even all the details. There's, here's A, B, C, here's A, the cost of A, B, the cost of B, C, and now we're working on 2B and the document that goes with 2B.
Sure, we can do whatever the will of the board.
Does that make sense to anybody but Mike P. Brain?
I know, I hear what you're saying.
But it's in parentheses, 2A, 2B.
But that's not what she's still not seeing that. I mean, she's seeing that, but that's not what she's asking for. Dr. B.
Madam Chair, Board Member Gittens will be happy to do that. Scott and I have worked based upon the board's direction on the construction update, which you'll see at the briefing next week. We made those changes. We put the projects in the particular order that you asked them to be in. I can work with Scott offline. I think I understand the concept of, the total spreadsheet is fine for the people who get the total spreadsheet, but you'd like to see some additional pages that specifically outline Phase 1, Phase 2A, Phase 2B, and what those specific costs are.
And what those costs are.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all you, that's all, I'm saying something simple. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Dr. Bernier?
Our last question tonight, today, is K 11, approval of the agreement with the Lee County Sheriff's Department's SRO Division. I'm going to ask Kelly Letcher if she can come down. She has a great explanation. This is a budgetary concern. I will share with you that is Article 4 financing the $4.174,613 million to be paid entirely by the school district of Lee County. The short answer to that question while Kelly comes down is yes. This is the school district's portion of the cost. The safe school categorical will cover $5,111,705,000 of the total SRO costs, all contracts, and the district will pay the remaining $1.536 million from the general fund dollars. But I'll turn it over to Kelly at this time.
I think it's on. Okay. So your next question had to do with the costs of the other ones. And the city of Cape Coral is $1.2 million, the city of Sanibel is $50,000, the city of Fort Myers is $1,223,640. So you're, you ask what the cost last year was. They were basically the same for everyone except for the sheriff's department. The sheriff's department last year was $3.7 million. They have increased this year. The increase was due to a couple of things. We've added five officers to make sure that we have the adequate officers at each of the schools that we need. So last year in the sheriff's contract, we had 63 officers. This year we have 68. There was also a cost increase for the sheriff's department. They went from $56,322.36 per officer last year to $61,391.37. So we're paying $5,069.1 more per officer. So just to go back to the first one, too, I just want to add, it's asked if we're covering, the four millions are cost, but it is half the cost of a sheriff. So the sheriff's department is picking up the other half of the cost of the sheriff.
I just saw a couple of questions, so I want to repeat a couple of those figures. The Cape Coral PD, the approval that you provided is for $1.2 million. That's for 24 off. Some of you asked questions very specifically, so I'd like to come back. The city of Cape Coral PD is not to exceed $1.2 million. That's for 24 officers. The city of Sanibel is not to exceed $50,000. That is for one officer. The city of Fort Myers PD is not to exceed $1.223,640. That is for 22 officers. The reason why the Lee County Sheriff's Office District has, costs have gone up, is they have added additional officers. They spread out in some of our larger middle schools because they were starting to get as large as some of our smaller high schools. They believed that they needed two officers in order adequately protect. So we've added two officers to some of our schools, and then there has been an increase from the sheriff's department in the base salary of an officer from $56,000 to $61,000. And the difference, to Kelly's point, is exactly $5,069.1.
Okay, I'm going to have Ms. Patrica, then Ms. Vaughn, then Ms. Gittens.
I can't have SROs come up without mentioning the importance of ensuring that we have coverage when an officer calls out at a school. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And Ms. Vaughn?
Do we have, I guess, given the fact that you've given us the number of officers, et cetera, in each, the, how much we pay for an officer from sheriff's department versus Sanibel per SRO? What are the differences? Do you have that at hand?
I do not have the salary of an officer broken down. I could do the quick math in my, of the 24 divided by the 1.2 million, the one officer at 50,000 for Sanibel. I can get us that, but I would like to be as accurate as possible. We were very specific with the sheriff's offices because we saw how much that money increased, so we wanted to do a deeper dive, because that's really what the question was, was around the Lee County Sheriff's Office SRO contract.
Okay, and you can probably guess what's circling in my head now about that. What additional benefit, and I know we don't have a choice in this because we go with the law enforcement agencies that are over our particular areas, but, so there's, it sounds like there's a huge difference in an officer from Sanibel working in our schools versus a sheriff's officer as an SRO, and maybe Cape Coral and Fort Myers, or somewhere in between. I'm wanting to know what additional benefit Lee County Sheriff's Office is providing us, if any.
Before I have Kelly answer that question, I think it's.
It's a loaded question, isn't it?
Before I have Kelly answer that question, I think it's really important for us to understand that the last, the last thing I want to provide to the public is that we are going to be short when it comes to safety. I understand that the board here completely agrees with it, and I respect the question because it's about what value do we get? And I will tell you that any officer in one of our schools is a valuable resource. But I'll turn it over to Kelly for the more difficult answer.
Trying to get it on, hold on a second.
And I realize, it's a loaded question, but I think it's something that has to be out there, and we already learned that, wasn't it, I believe the sheriff's office has a lot better insurance benefits than we are able to supply to our teachers and employees, unfortunately. And so perhaps I'm being a little.
So let me, if you don't.
Piggy on this.
So the city of Cape Coral and the city of Sanibel, an officer is 50,000, our share of the officer for each of those. And for the city of Fort Myers, it's 55,620. Now, what I can tell you, and Dave, if he was here, could probably answer that, this a lot better than I could, but there was an agreement that the municipalities would pick up their area, and then the sheriff's department would pick anything up outside of those municipalities. And so that's why we have the different contracts in the different areas. Beyond that, you would probably need to have Dave Newland explain any additional.
Thank you, Kelly. I could go a little deeper and do a deeper dive and work with Dave to get some.
Or Carmine Marcina. I'm sorry. I'm done.
I certainly can work with.
So, and I heard you, Superintendent, say there are some select schools where we have two. So maybe that should be clarified, that it was not just a blanket, every school gets two.
Ms. Gittens, I don't know, I don't think you can attribute the comment to me. I didn't hear that. I had some conversations with the sheriff's office through Dave Newland when we looked at the size of some of our middle schools that were beginning to get as big as our highs, and we want to move that. I've heard the sheriff say that if he had his way, he'd love to have two officers in every school, but financially, right now, that's not feasible nor warranted, more importantly. We have some smaller schools. We've worked really hard on single points of entry. We've done, we believe we have the right level of security in our school buildings, especially as some school buildings get larger.
Right, no, and I understand that. I just think we should make sure it's clarified that some people are not going saying that we're adding two to every school. So, thank you.
No, thank you very much. And I think that was the.
Madam Chair, I believe that's the last of the questions related to.
Ms. Fisher, did you have, I know that was one of your questions. Did you have any comments or, you're good? Perfect, thank you. Okay, so as we stand right now, this was 30 minutes, which has been an hour, so we are 30 minutes behind, just for FYI. So thank you, Dr. Bernier.
I know that two of us have a hard stop because we've got to be at an event, so we can't stay past 5:00. Just wanted to make you aware.
Three of us, my bad.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to move on, so we are, the next one is the health services opt-in process, which is 15 minutes. And, Dr. Bernier?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to have.
Oh, they're up there.
I'm happy to have our team introduce themselves in just a second. You're well aware of the change in the state law. I think our school buildings and our student support team has done an amazing job of having our schools figure out a way with opt-in process. Again, this was a change based upon laws passed this year that in order to have health services provided at a school, instead of an opt-out, meaning I don't want my child to go to the clinic, parents had to opt-in to all clinic services. Student Services team has worked extremely hard. This will be a brief presentation, and I believe, in watching the open houses and getting feedback from all of you, we've been very impressed with not only how Student Services has handled it, but even more impressed with how our principals on the ground have done an amazing job of making sure that we can provide the necessary medical care to our students within our clinics.
Thank you for that, Dr. Bernier. Ladies?
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you so much for that wonderful introduction. We're going to go ahead and start presenting. My name is Wally Cologne, Assistant Director of Health Services, and with me.
Jessica Duncan, Executive Director of Student Services.
Are you able to do that?
We're going to put it up. Oh, no, I don't, okay. Is that coming up? Oh, go ahead.
We're going to have it up in just a minute, but we could go ahead and get started, okay? Because you guys do have access to the presentation, correct? All right, wonderful. So as Dr. Bernier was saying, there is new legislation that did come through this school year. It went into effect on July 1st, and it's in regards to House Bill 1557, which includes language that directly impacts health services, which school districts must ensure that parents are informed of each health service that is provided and a signature of acknowledgement or exemption of said service is on file. What we've done is during this time, we have reached out and have been working very closely with our legal team. We have reached out to various school districts across the state of Florida. We have also, I have reached out to the Florida Department of Health, the Florida Department of Education, and the School Nurse Consultant of the state of Florida, just to make sure that we are doing exactly what this legislation is requesting us to do. So what we've done in order to be in compliance with this new legislation is that we have used the Focus Portal, which houses currently the student health and emergency contact forms. So we went ahead and piggybacked on those forms to include the consent forms that have been broken down to explain every healthcare service that is provided in our school clinics.
Do we go to the next page or?
Okay, so while we try to figure that out, sorry about that. So our consent forms are broken up into five different documents. The first document that parents are seeing on Focus is a school clinic and health services consent form, which again is broken down and includes our first aid services and also medication administration. The medication administration does require additional consents from the healthcare provider and parent written consent. The following form. The following form that parents will be seeing is health screenings. This is state mandated in the state of Florida for kindergarten, first, third, and grade students, which includes vision, hearing, height, weight, scoliosis screening. If the student fails this vision screenings, that is where then the third consent form comes into play, which is specific for students that fail the vision screening, they are then eligible to participate on the vision bus. This is also a service that's provided through the state of Florida free of charge to the students. If they are deemed eligible and necessary of glasses, they will be prescribed for free for these families. The next form that parents are seeing is a Medicaid-certified school nurse, school match program, which provides reimbursement for medically necessary services that are provided through, for Medicaid-eligible students. Some of the services that are provided are for catheter stations, tube feedings, healthcare treatments.
So, I'll just talk a little bit about the Medicaid-certified school match program, as you might have some questions about what this is. So, all of the districts in Florida are eligible to participate in the Medicaid school match program, and we are able to receive reimbursement for Medicaid for various services. Some of those services would be occupational therapy, speech and language therapy, physical therapy, nursing services. Prior to 2020, we were only able to get reimbursement for those if a student had an IEP. As of 2020, the law was expanded to include other nursing services, so if a student has a disability, might be on their 504, we can now get reimbursed for that. A couple of things about this program, it does not impact a student's Medicaid, so if they're using it at school, it has no impact on their ability to use Medicaid or their services outside of school. It does require a one-time notification, but as we are just now currently expanding our nursing services within the district, we did that through our consent form, since parents were already on that, to going through and to sign consent. There might be a point in the future that we look at some other options through enrollment, but for right now, we've done it on the health consent form. If somebody marks that, and they are not eligible for that, that's okay. We just don't, don't put them in for reimbursement. If somebody is Medicaid-eligible, but they don't meet all of the criteria, again, that's not an issue, we, we just wouldn't put them through. So, some of the criteria are, they have to be Medicaid-eligible on a day to service, they have to be under 21, they have to either have an IEP, a 504, or some designation of a disability in the school district, they have to have Medicaid reimbursable services, so some of the services that are eligible. This program, I could not find an exact initiation date, but the Medicaid match program has been around since, what I can find, about 1997, but the expansion is from 2020.
So, and then the following consent is for emergency services. This one is specific to the use of stock epinephrine that we will have in every one of our school clinics, in addition to the use of CPR and AED if the student is in cardiac arrest. What we do want to make clear is that in the event of an emergency, under Good Samaritan laws, our nurses and our staff that are rendering care in good faith by their training that they have received through their licensure, they are able to intervene during that emergency situation if it's life-threatening. So, as parents are filling out their consent forms online through Focus, we are able to run a school-wide report, so we can see, again, everyone that has provided consent or opted out of a particular healthcare service. This is just a screen grab of a individual student, so we could pull the report individually, or we could pull it, pull it school-wide. As a student is coming into the school clinic, our clinics all use the clinic data management system, which is CDMS, it's our own system, where we are documenting every clinic visit that we have with a student. So, every child is searched on this system, we are able to see an automatic alert whenever their name is put in there, where it will indicate whether the parent did not provide consent, or they have opted out of a service. If they have not provided consent, we will be working with that family, we would call them, let them know the reason why their student is in there, and make sure that we just try to work with them to make sure that they are on the Focus Portal.
Couple of- So, outreach to parents, one of the questions is, how does this impact in schools? What is the impact to teachers? At this point, what we've shared with our administrators in our presentations in our school, and through some questions from TALC, are that teachers should continue to do what they've done. So, if you're on the PE field and ICE has been provided, you would continue to do that. Sometimes in schools, they have these little things called boo-boo bags, where they might have a Band-Aid, and we continue to do that. What we're not looking to do is shift responsibility, so it's not the teacher's job to now provide clinic services in lieu of that, however, we, we just want them to continue. We also want them to continue to send to the clinic, so we don't want them to think, oh, they don't have this parental consent, so I can't send them. It is critical that they send them to the clinic, and that's for a couple of reasons. One is, there might be a medical condition that's not an emergency that may develop into an emergency. One example would be a nosebleed is not a medical emergency, but a nosebleed for 15 minutes or more is a medical emergency. So, they're still going to continue to send them, they still will need to be, they'll still have an overall look by the nurse before the parent is called. The role of the clinic will be to contact the parent. Also, as we're contacting the parents to try to get something in writing for them, we're also walking them through getting their paperwork and things on the portal, and that's of critical importance. So, we don't want to bypass that piece and just provide medical services in another location or through another provider, because our goal is to really have them get on the Focus Portal, because in addition to clinic services, which are important and are maybe a little more urgent, so that's what's going to bring it to a parent's attention, they also need to get on the, on the portal for all those other important things, their report cards, attendance, discipline, and a lot of information that they need. So, outreach to parents has been critical. Media Day, we had interviews, shared that information, we had numerous messages go out through school messenger, through social media. Open houses, they made a point to have computers set up and processes for parents to get their portal account set up, and we've had numerous departments also involved in various community events. We just had one this past Saturday in Fort Myers, where we took 20 computers, and as parents came through, we continued to get them on their portal. So, we will continue to do that throughout the year. We know that access to technology might be more difficult for some families, so as we're looking at students who don't have the portal, we'll continue to outreach in other means, which might even be individual visits to the home, or support like that if, if transportation or technology is a barrier for the family.
Board members, I have no comments. I think the presentation is self-explanatory. I'll turn it over. Any questions or discussion?
Thank you, and I just want to say, thank you both very much, and that you answered the questions that people have been sending in, so thank you for that with the Medicaid-certified school, the program, thank you for explaining that, and as well as that we are there to help and assist those who do not have computers, and making sure that everybody gets in with, where they need to be at, so thank you for that. Ms. Patrica, and then Ms. Kittens.
So, from an end-user perspective, this was super easy to complete. I want to say I got through three kids in 10 minutes, so thank you for that. I am concerned, I know that you've put a tremendous effort into communication, but I am concerned that there's been a disconnect, because I've heard from a lot of parents and a lot of teachers who believe they can't give ICE, or can't give a Band-Aid. So, is there a way for us to do a fun, cute video with a little kid in multiple languages to, to ease parents' concerns, and to let teachers know they can still love on their kids, and, you know, help them in a emergency situation where there's a scuff knee or something? You know what I mean? It's kind of impacted the morale of the people that I've spoken to, so I wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that.
Thank you for that. Ms. Kittens?
And I, thank you, I agree, I've heard the same thing. On slide number two, it was a little confusing to me when I read HB 1557, and the last part that says, offered at student school, and the option to withhold consent or decline specific service, and maybe this is Attorney Bruno, is withholding consent, to me, says that everyone's opted in, and you're selecting to opt out, but then decline specific services is, it's almost the same thing, like you're, you're opting out rather than in. According to HB 1557, do we as a district have the ability to decide whether we're doing the opt-in or out?
No, the statute is very clear, you either are going to opt in, or you're going to decline services.
Okay. And, there was one other quick question, and again, and you focused on the part of parents that are not as computer literate, or have that ability, and how do they know that they have to, to do this? And I know the schools are going to inform them, but in, in the past, if they've had kids in the system the whole time, you know, knowing that they now have to sign this in order for their child to get medical attention, and I've heard the same thing Ms. Patrica has, that, that, you know, even some of the staff is feeling, well, we can't do this anymore, and we can't do that anymore, so.
Thank you, and you're going to do that by, all this outreach to parents, correct? Going out in the community and doing all of this stuff, and making sure we're out there, spreading the word?
And that will be continued. I mean, that's, that will be throughout the year, yes.
Yes, Ms. Vaughn?
Well, I would, I would like to add my thanks to the team that has come up with so many creative ways to get this information out there, and I would also like to point out to the public that this, this dictate from the Florida Legislature has laid layer upon layer of extra things that all the school districts have to do, and I know, as, you know, many of us are people that have taught in the schools, worked in the schools, and so we know what, it really is a task at the beginning of the school year, whether it's by a piece of paper or digitally, to get that information, and we have a transient population where phone numbers change, and phones are disconnected, or students go to live with another parent or another guardian, and, and so, you know, some, some parents might think, this was easy to do, it only took a few minutes, and thank God, by and large, that's, that's going to be true, but we have a significant population that needs exactly what we're doing, and the risk is, that even though we're doing such a good job with that, that we will miss some people. And I know when I saw this, I immediately jumped on it, and I know I already talked with Dr. Bernier and Mr. Ramirez on, on this, and so, and this is from me personally, forget about that board thing, "Thank you, Florida Legislature, for making things harder for all of us in public education." That's from me personally.
Ms. Vaughn, thank you. Your comments, you're finished with your comments?
I'm done, yes.
Thank you.
My problem.
Dr. Bernier, I think you, you finished with your comments? Okay, ladies, thank you so very much, I really appreciate it, and we're here to help out in the community whatever you need. So, next on the agenda, Ms. Kathy Dupree-Bruno?
We're going to pick off with our review of the bylaws from Niola. Ms. Jivinelli, I have your bylaws binder for you. Thank you. We have our Niola team with us, leading us off is Mr. Tom Young.
Good afternoon.
We are, we're joined today by Pat Corbett, who is the Chief Operating Officer, CEO for Niola. You were joined, you were joined the last time by Amanda Clapp, who is the President of the company. These two are the senior officers of Niola, and we as a team here, Mindy McNichols, Mindy McNichols and Frankie St. James and I are very pleased to have Pat and Amanda with their view of policies here to assist us as we go through the policy review and revision process. I would like to echo one thing that Ms. Patrica said. I too have a hard stop, 5:00. My granddaughter's having her 18th birthday dinner at a restaurant, and I am due there, and I intend to be there. So, with that having been said, and one comment, as an aside, this is personal, my personal. I can't believe, every time I involve myself in the weeds of this process, I cannot believe the myriad, the plethora of ridiculous imposition of requirements that are imposed upon us by the legislature that tell you, us, how to teach children. That's my own personal opinion. So, Madam Chair, I'm ready, I believe we're on 149.2, and as we proceeded the last time, it is my, my custom and my practice, unless the board chair has a different approach, my question is, are there any questions, starting with 149.2? And if there are no questions, we'll just go on until somebody, what's the first question the board has for the policies that we're going to review today?
Thank you. So, is there any for 149.2, and Ms. Kittens, then Ms. Patrica?
Good afternoon, sir. Okay, I, and if it's just straight from the law, then it's straight from the law, but what gives me angst is the, from time to time, however, line two, individual board members make. I thought that we had the ability to speak for ourselves whenever we, it's off it, as long as we were not saying we are representing the board.
I will say this is not required by law. You may revise this as you wish. This is considered a best practice. Other boards have adopted this particular revision. You may choose to adopt it or not, it is discretionary on your part, sir.
I just feel it's, it's a bit restrictive to say, it doesn't say "may," though, from time to time, however, individual board members make, I don't know. And perhaps the next line clarifies it, making it clear the views do not necessarily reflect. As long as that line is there, it just kind of strikes me that time to time is, you know, every now and then you can say something type thing, but, anyway, I'll leave it.
Ms. Patrica?
Yes, so-
And we're still on the 1-
49.1, two.
49.2.
Point two. So, my question was, does this mean that, first of all, I love the policy, I think you're absolutely right. If board members talk too much in these advisory committees, it, it can be stifling to the people in the room. So, I, I like the policy, I just wonder whether we need to do away with the board member comment at the beginning of each board advisory committee meeting, because that's what we typically do on the agenda, that, one of the first items on each agenda for these committee meetings, and, and this is where the board members are supposed to talk. If they have something to say, it should be limited to that five-minute period at the beginning on the agenda. So, I don't know if this policy should be altered to include that, that sort of five-minute presentation by the board. I, I mean, you know, we're always available to answer a question if- I mean, you know, we're always available to answer a question if it comes up, but we are supposed to be observers, not. So, I like the policy, I just wonder about the five-minute comment, how that should be reflected in the policy. And the other thing is, the title of the policy is a district advisory, and these are board advisory committees, with the exception of DAC, which is the District Advisory Council. So, I ask the Board to consider those changes.
Any comments on that, ladies? I agree with the board committee, because they are board committees. And I don't think that it's necessary to put that five minutes in there, because I think just being in there, that we shall be observer, is statement enough. Does anybody else have any comments on this particular one? Ms. Vaughn?
It's always been my understanding that that time is for board members to update members of the committee. I've never, as a liaison, I've never seen it as a time to express my own personal opinion on things, just to update. And so, I don't see it as a problem.
Go ahead, Ms. DePree-Bruno.
I think there's a little bit of confusion, and Mr. Young, you may not know this, for their board advisory committees, they have one board member that is designated as the liaison for the Board, that works specifically with the Chair, and actually participates in the, in the board meeting. And then we may have board members that actually come to observe. So, I wanted to make sure there was that differentiation, because I think that's where I'm hearing maybe some confusion.
Go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
Well, I'm a little bit more confused now, because I didn't think I participated in the meeting. I thought I was there to gather information and bring it back to the Board for report. So, I'm not a member of the committee. I give my update at the beginning, and then I quiet down unless a question is specifically directed to me.
That's how I've, I've always thought it was as well. I don't know if anybody else thought it was anything different than that, as far as participation. We just bring back information from them, whatever's given from them. But then again, this is saying that if other, other members attend, then they would be observer?
That is how the Board has done, other members can't attend, but they are observers.
Because you become a part of the community instead.
Exactly.
Okay, right, okay. I just want to make sure I'm reading it, I read it right.
We want to be careful with sunshine as well, even though we do advertise these, and I make sure it's noted that there may be more than one board member, but at the same token.
All right, thank you. Is there any, Ms. Kittens?
Hey, maybe I'm confused. We are 149.1V2, correct?
149, yeah, 2, point 2. And it says, board member participation at district committee meetings.
Okay, then I'm sorry, I must be on the wrong one.
You're probably on 1.
I'm on 149 dot 1V2.
Yeah, it's different.
We finished that the last time we were.
Yes.
Okay. And, okay.
So, can I ask about the, as far as the board member participation at board committee meeting versus district?
I have a question about that, too.
Yes.
Are there, are there committee meetings which are not board meetings?
Just DAC.
Yeah, it would just be the 1. That would be DAC.
What about student?
The other words are all advisory.
What about student?
A student advisory committee.
But that's a district.
But that's, right, it's not a board advisory. Yeah. So, there's, that's two separate ones. Ms. DePree-Bruno? Guidance on that one, please?
That's, that's correct. There's, there's the student advisory committee, and the district advisory committee, and then you have your board advisory committees. To clarify with regards to participation, that's what your question was?
Right, so what, because of the fact that this says, board member participation at district committee meeting, so does that need to be board member participation at district slash board committee meetings, so it suffices for both of them?
I think it's more for the board advisory meetings.
Okay, so then, district would be, to then be changed into board, if that's acceptable?
Board advisory.
Board advisory, if that's okay with everyone.
Well, to read the language.
Yes.
The second sentence, to ensure that the presence of board members at committee meetings.
Advisory, advisory meetings.
Or district, it says committee meetings. So, this language means all committee meetings. So, the question is, do you, do you want to restrict this? And to my way of thinking, if you put board up there, then arguably, you're only talking about committees that are established by the Board. Just observation.
So, just, just for clarification, there have been times where there are district committee meetings, and some board members may attend, and be a, not participate, but be present.
Sure.
At those district committee, and they do not participate at all. They don't say anything, they are just complete observers. For the board advisory committees, you will have a board liaison, and what I mean by participate, sometimes they will give their, their review in terms of an update from the Board, they will answer questions with regards to whatever it is that they're asking for, they are participating in that committee. And then you will have board members who are there just to observe, and not participate in that meeting.
So, how, how would you prefer this to be worked? Should it be board committee meetings? And again, if it's board committee meetings, does this mean that there are other committee meetings where board members may be present, and may participate? Because it's not precluded by this, since you've restricted it to board meetings. Just an observation again. I'm not sure what the Board's preference is, I'm just saying, this is how I would read this. If you strike district and put board, you are limiting this policy only to those committees that are established by the Board, and where there is an official board presence. That's the way it sounds to me.
Okay, so, Ms. Mary?
Well, the way I read this, it, I mean, the statement is clear. And includes the, that the, that the belief, that the involvement of stakeholders is critical to good decision-making, and that board members may participate in committee discussions as members of the public. Statements by board members which reflect personal opinion will be clearly identified. So, I mean, I think we do that now, even as liaison to the board advisory committees. We give it an update about the activities of the Board, and then we bring back any kind of recommendations or questions that the board members, the advisory committee people have. So, I, I would leave it the way it is, but.
Yeah, so I don't think it's the paragraph itself, it's the title. So, is the title acceptable, as is board member participation at district committee meetings, period? Does that work then for everybody, now that we've just had that conversation? Ms. Vaughn?
I'm wavering, I've read it about five times. And, and, you know, in this district, oops.
You have to hold it.
In this district, we do have district, but we have the board advisory. And, you know, now that I'm thinking, we probably need to have that language, because it's confusing. I know it's been confusing to me, seeing that titled, district committee meetings, because we have very specific roles at our board advisory committee meetings.
So, let me go, Ms. DePree-Bruno, and then Ms. Kittens, and then Ms. Patrica.
Board members, just a thought for you to consider while you're deliberating, we recently had a community feedback group, and during that, there were some board members who attended, but they did not participate, and they did not offer any suggestions or communicate, they just observed. My concern would be, if we had a board member in their public capacity provide feedback or participate, and this is something that could come before you, I would have a lot of concern about that. And if there's more than one of you there, I would definitely have a lot of concern about that. So, I would be very, very careful. And remember, some of these district committees, some are required to be in the sunshine, and some are not required to be in the sunshine, depending on what it is. That one committee was a, more of a fact-finding committee, not necessarily a recommendation committee, because we had different processes. So, we, I just want you to ponder that if you have this discussion.
So, in what you just stated, then, this would be, to me, it just changed everything too, because now it removed that advisory committee, it's just any committee. Okay, thank you. Ms. Kittens, and then Ms. Patrica.
Thank you. And that's basically what I was going to say, if we start limiting it, we limit ourselves. If we say, a committee within the district, it could be one of the special committees, it could be a board, it could be anything. And it's more generic, and we stay out of trouble.
Thank you, Ms. Kittens. Ms. Patrica? Are we good with the way it is, then? Just leave it as such? Thank you for fixing that, and we'll just leave it as it was. Appreciate that.
Pat, go ahead.
There is another bylaw, 0155.
Push your.
There you go.
There's another bylaw, 0155, that deals with board committees.
Yes.
This would be district committees, so we probably want to leave it as presented.
Yes, we will. Thank you. So, we would just take out that board that you fixed, and leave it as such. Thank you.
That's one of the reasons why we have Pat and Amanda here, is because they have a psychopathic knowledge of the entire policy manual.
No, appreciate that.
We don't.
You have to talk it through, and we get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to the next, next question. Doesn't necessarily have to be the next policy. If there's no question on the next policy, go to the next question.
Okay, does anyone have, any coming up? Ms. Patrica?
149.3, I just need.
Say it again, please.
149.3.
That's the board staffing communication.
I need clarification on what certain language means, and I don't have the policy in front of me, I just have the quote in front of me. "All official communications, policies, and directives of the Board of Staff interest and concern to the staff will generally be communicated." I don't, I don't know what that means. If this is a wordsmithing thing, I'll highlight it and send it off, but I genuinely don't know what that means. So, I hesitate to approve a policy when I don't know what something means.
So, that's 149.3, and that would be B, board communication to staff. That's where she was just stating. Ms. Kittens?
But doesn't it finish by saying, be generally communicated through the superintendent?
Yes, but it was the first part of the sentence that I didn't understand, which is why, that's the part I put in my notes.
Which, which part is it that you don't understand?
"All official communications, policies, and directives of the Board of Staff interest and concern to the staff."
Okay, then you scroll up a little bit, so I can see it, please. Or the other way.
Oh, remember, I took these notes, how many weeks ago? As I read it out loud, it makes more sense. We can skip this and move on.
Okay, thank you.
Was anyone else, any concerns on this one? No? Okay. Does anybody have the next one? Ms. Patrica, if you have another?
I'm skipping to 153, if anybody has anything before that.
Anything for 151, 152, that, they're pretty much the, what we've already had? And, I'm sorry, you said 150?
153.
153, appointees?
Yeah, there's something, there's a timing in here. Again, I read this so many weeks ago. I think we do our appointments in June, do we not?
We did change it.
Yeah. And I think there's different timing in here, if I recall correctly. At the organizational meeting. That's not when we do our board liaison appointments, we do our board liaison appointments in June.
All these are discretionary, they're not, they're, you're not involved with a conflict with the current law, so what you need to do here is, is adopt a policy which reflects your current practice.
So, I think it's just that first part, at the organizational meeting, that needs to be changed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Pressure, pressure button, please, on the.
I'm supposed to remember that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, this policy is, is about the organizational meeting, and you can see that all of those items are just, are options.
Okay.
So, but the one thing that isn't an option, is the very last one, and that's the value adjustment board, the county value adjustment board, that's a state law, state requirement, you have to do it at the organizational meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the only one that's not optional.
So, I'm sorry, what are we looking at, then, removing, or leaving?
I think.
Ms. Patrica?
I think that the first two come out, because we don't do that until June.
That's about appointees, I guess.
The third one comes out, which means the sub-one would come out, and we would just leave the, but I, I still think we do the value adjustment board in June, don't we?
Uh huh.
And it goes through.
We just.
So, we need to change that, is what I'm being told, and this policy needs to be adopted, so that we know that we're doing the value adjustment board appointment at the org meeting.
Ms. DePree-Bruno, do you recall when we just, we just, we just did that? I mean, it was a couple, just recently. And I'm sorry, you said, what did you say, by statute, it was?
It was in June.
No, something she said.
She said by statute, the value adjustment board.
This is about the.
The reorg meeting.
At the reorg, you said, by statute, which is November.
Right.
But I don't believe, I thought we just did that.
I have to look and do some research on that, Ms.
So, can we hold on to this until we have the exact dates on that?
But we'll make sure that we do it, as the statute requires us to do it.
Correct.
So, November, we'll do it in November.
Because I know we have to have that into the county, into them at the, a certain time, so that they can do their, when they start their processing. Ms. Fisher, do you have?
No, that's fine. I was just going to say, I was just going to say, we could say, at, at, at the designated meeting, because then, whatever time of the year we do that.
Okay.
But, I think it's a good idea for Attorney DePree Bruno to check the statute first.
So, we'll have, we're going to check, we're going to leave this as is for at this moment, and then come back to this one. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, are the first two points in kind of contradicting each other, chairman shall appoint, school board will provide, considering how we've done this in, in the past, rotating and deciding among ourselves, rather than a chairperson.
Correct, yeah.
I think we'll get to that in.
That's why I said, we'll come back to this one.
When are we on?
Isn't this the appointees?
153.
153.
153.
Why wouldn't, pardon me, why wouldn't this section here, the language which we're talking about now, be included in 151? And then, then the appointees would be a separate process, whatever process it is that you follow.
Yeah, because we already have, and Ms. DePree-Bruno, we already have one for that, where we appoint people for different committees and such.
That's.
That's what you're speaking of, right, Ms. Vaughn?
I'm, I'm looking at 153, appointees, right?
Yes.
And the first, at the organizational meeting, well, and that, we've been discussing, but the first point is, the chairman shall appoint members, this may be necessary.
Choose one or the other.
And then the next one says, school board will provide for the selection.
It's one or the other. So, you're giving each board, the, Neola gives each board the option of choosing the first or the second, but not both. Because you're right, they are contradictory.
Oh, okay, somehow I missed.
That's what the parentheses.
The parentheses, remember last time, the parentheses is like, choose one?
No, I don't, Rob, I don't remember.
Basically, you choose one of the first three.
Okay.
All three are, are on the same point, just choose whichever one is most consistent with the way you do business.
Okay, yeah.
That.
Correct.
Parenthesis thing flew out of my head.
Okay. So, so again, we know that those are options, and then Ms. DePree-Bruno, we'll, we're going to let her come back with that information for us, and we'll move forward with that. Ms. DePree-Bruno, and, I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher, and then Ms. DePree-Bruno.
Okay, so, so basically, out of the four parentheses, you choose the one that we decide on, and then, and further at the organizational meeting, it's about the value adjustment board, so that's not a choice, that's there.
Correct.
It is our position, our position that that is required by law, and your, your counsel will give you a confirmation of that or not. will give you a confirmation of that or not.
Correct. Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Gittens, did you?
I, I don't know if I'm confused or not. I thought we had to choose one of these, and I go back, no, okay, but then, I go back to what Ms. Patrica said before, that we do, we had switched our selection of organizations and committees to June, to coincide with FSBA at one point.
So at this, with, so that there's, there's less confusion here, what we would be doing, as I understand it, is striking the first thing, which says, "At the organizational meeting, V." Strike that.
Yes.
And then pick one of the three, which most accurately reflects the way you do business. And then it would conclude, assuming that your attorney agrees, "Further, at the organizational meeting, the Board shall elect one member," so that's all under appointees. But it's very clear that the last one is not option.
Correct.
Well, and just can I say, okay, and the set, the difference in the second and the third, the second one is just saying, "The school board will provide," but the third one says, "How we will do it, through consensus."
Yep.
So if we want to be clear, the third one gives us not only the what, but the how to do it.
And the second one doesn't give you the how at all.
The second one just says, and then we'll be back at the same point, trying to figure out, well, how do we do that?
I agree.
So, Ms. Patrica?
I thought we were getting rid of everything except Value Adjustment Board, because our current school board advisory committee policy addresses these first, the first three paragraphs.
Okay, well, we don't have your current school board advisory committee.
I understand, when we, when we get to that, I was gonna suggest we keep it, rather than adopt yours, no offense.
No, no, no.
But ours has been, ours, ours is lengthy, and it has been changed over the years to accommodate exactly how we do things here in Lee County, and we do not do any of the things in the first three paragraphs at our, at our reorg.
All right, so the place to put your policy might be very well, 0153, and replace this with that, and leave the last paragraph in, to make sure that that's clear.
And I was under the impression that Attorney Dupree Bruno was going to confirm with you, that that is a requirement of statute, that we do it at the reorg, and if it is, we can adopt the policy without the first three paragraphs.
Correct. Ms. Fisher, and then, Mr. Prebreno?
And then, just to add to the point, there are not three paragraphs, there are four.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the third to me, the fourth is a second.
So as I understand it, and I'm sure one of you will correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't mind being corrected, and don't take it personally, what you're talking about is substituting your current policy regarding appointees, substituting that for the first part of this one, and leaving over, onto the last paragraph.
No, I'm, I'm suggesting that we substitute ours for your proposed 155 version one.
155 version one, okay, I see.
Which we're getting to.
Then what is 153?
153 is just the last paragraph, assuming it's required by law.
Okay, then it's not on appointees.
Sorry?
It is, it is not on appointees, it is only on the appointee to the Value Adjustment.
Correct. Because ours already covers appointees.
Okay, so we need to change the title of 153.
Okay. Mr. Prebreno, I know you've been trying to...
So, board members, sometimes you have appointments to non-board advisory committees, community organizations, et cetera, so, and there is, I think, in the 9000s, in the Neola policies, regarding board advisory committees, so I think that's where we can have that discussion, and we can bring that back to the board, but again, for your deliberation as you're discussing, keep that in the back of your mind, that sometimes you have non-board advisory committee appointments as well.
Okay, so, as it stands right now, this particular, thank you, Ms. Prebreno, this one right here is just, we're gonna put this one on hold, and move forward, until Mr. Prebreno comes back.
Well, you don't need to put it on hold for me, it's either the statute says it or the statute doesn't say it. So if the statute says it, we're gonna keep that paragraph, and we're gonna move forward with it.
So we would need to add the statute number then, because it's not on here.
I think it's 194.015.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I see it, I apologize.
So, we're back to 153.
Yes, sir. Ms. Gittens?
But if we take out everything and only have the last paragraph, is there another policy that states what number, paragraph number three say, says that we will reach a consensus of selection of members to various organizations?
Ms. Patrica says that we will put that, your current policy on appointees suggests that we put that in 155, which we're coming up to.
So then, Mr. Tom had said, so the title, which just says, "Appointees," may just be changed to "Value Board," because if this is pertaining to "Value Board," then...
Doesn't make sense.
Pat, go ahead.
My name.
I'd consider adding the last paragraph here on the Value Board to your organizational meeting bylaw.
So, again, so this one would be gone, if I keep saying that. Am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I think I'm losing my mind. Ms. Dupree Bruno?
Will you have something else to address, the appointments to non-board advisory? I mean, we can add the language in another policy, but you have had this discussion many times about appointments to non-advisory positions. You have a slew of appointments that you do, and they're not all board advisory. That's what my concern is, to make sure that all of the board members are on the same page and understand the policy.
And all of those have been done at the same time.
And they're usually done at the same time.
Correct. So if this one has to be done at a set time, then this one has to be done, but the other ones, we have, already have a time that we do all of those, including outside.
And you can change the, I mean, those, you can do it at a different time, it doesn't matter if it's June or not. I think the statute is with regards to the Value Adjustment Board, so that's one thing. But my, my, what I want the board to think about is, not too long ago, you had some discussions about whether or not somebody was appointed to this particular community organization, if not, and who did, so I, I want you to think about, this would add some clarity for you, when it comes to those types of appointments.
Ms. Fisher?
And, and following up with Attorney Dupree Bruno's statement, if you look at paragraph four, it says, "Board members shall discuss the need or necessity for board members to participate in various organizations, committees, and/or councils, as may be required by law, board policy, or desired by the board, and determine appropriate representation," which could be like the, the Equity Guide, or any of those different committees that come up. So this allows for some flexibility, and then still covers the requirement to appoint someone to the Value Adjustment Board.
Okay, so, Ms. Gittens?
If I may, I, I go back to my statement earlier about that paragraph three gives you the how. So, suggestion, paragraph three, which gives the how we do it, paragraph four talks about the things that are required and not, and then finally, the explanation of the last one, with Value Added Board.
Okay, I'm trying to get off of that, but I feel like we're gonna stay here.
We don't do paragraph three and four at the org meeting, we do paragraph three and four in June.
So what we're not saying, the title will be changed, or the title can remain the same, as appointees, and the only reference to the organizational meeting will be the one paragraph.
That's correct.
The rest of it will be how you do appointees generally.
Okay.
Right, because, I mean, just like Attorney Bruno said, though, there are times, other than June, that we may need appointees to a committee.
And you don't have a time up here, in any one of those places, yet, so...
Well, organizational meeting at the time.
Yes, the organizational meeting only, the only time that's referred to now, if we keep this revision in mind, is the organizational meeting. That's the only one. The rest of them don't have any times at all. It's up to you.
Okay, so it can, so we can move on to the next one, if I, if I may, again, so the, the part regarding the Value Board would go on to the policy with the organization, organizational meeting, or are we looking at this being the same?
Look at what it says up there.
Let's go back up, let's go back up to those three. Now, you, right now, okay, you are right at the right place. Right now, you have selected the third option. You're talking about the third option. And, and this one is very, it doesn't talk about when you, as may be necessary, it gives you complete discretion as to when you do it, to the various organizations, committees, and/or councils, totally open to you, when do you do it? The only, the only obligation is that you reach a consensus, if that's what you do, because some districts allow the board, the chair to make the appointment, very few, but some do. This talks about consensus. And then it says, "The Board shall discuss the need or necessity for board members to participate." You just, when you talk about the appointments to the committee, then you also talk about or, or not. You can just leave it, you can not choose that option under the, the third paragraph.
Okay, so, thank you, Mr. Tom, so if everybody can see what's up here now for 153, the appointees, with the removal of the organizational meeting, and moving the other to 0151, does this look, no?
Let me, let me ask about moving it to 151. It is an appointment.
Okay.
It, it could easily stay under 153, and it is a specific reference to the organizational meeting. That's the only one that talks about the organizational meetings. So the rest of them can be done anytime, and they all would fall under 153, appointees.
Because the other ones are not given specific times, and that one is given a specific time. Got you. So, is everybody good with that?
No, well, well, yes, yes, take out, move to...
So take, remove the, remove the move, and then that's going to...
And subject to counselor's review, to determine whether or not...
Well, the state statute's there, so we have that, so we have what the law says we're there, so it's on there already.
Okay.
Is everybody good with that, for us to move on?
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you for going through that with us. Is there, is there a next one that someone has, questions regarding, please? I'm sorry?
Is that the last question?
That was it for that one.
No, period.
Oh.
You're dreaming.
For 153. Calm down, calm down.
Lost my head for a second there. Next question.
Okay. Ms. Tricca, do you have more?
I'm on to 155. I don't have anything until 155.
Yeah, we have two versions.
And I would suggest rejecting both, because our...
Is it 155 committees?
Yes. Our board advisory committees have, our policy has been, you know, well, it's really comprehensive, and it's been fine-tuned over the years to really reflect the way we do things here in Lee County, so I would recommend keeping that one, and rejecting both versions presented by Neola.
Are you recommending substituting yours for 155, or deleting 155 in its entirety, subject and, and all?
No, substituting ours for yours.
Okay.
I think ours is good, too. Is there any comments on that one?
And what policy number is that? I'm sorry, Ms. Patrica?
One, go ahead, Ms. Tricca.
Our policy number? I will rely on the board attorney for that.
Okay.
Is it 1.20? Ms. Dupree Bruno?
I have a question.
Turn your...
Mic.
Microphone, please.
Ms. Dupree Bruno?
Sorry. I have a, a question for Neola. So, I, I want to make sure that I understand this correctly, because board policy, I'm sorry, your policy, 9140, talks about citizen advisory committees, as well as business advisory. So are these committees the same as what is considered a citizen's advisory? I, I just want to make sure there's clarification on that.
Pat, do you have a quick response to that?
You can choose either route.
You can, you can choose any of these. So you have citizens advisory committees, or you just have board committees, or you have...
Okay. So, so the committee that is being referenced in this policy, 155, could be our board advisory committee, similar to what's in your 9000s.
I think so.
Okay.
So, and I think that, Ms. Dupree Bruno, is, is it our policy, is it 1.20?
Our board policy...
The one that, pertaining to the committees?
Just one second, Madam Chair, and I'll look it up.
I think it is.
So we're talking about deleting 155, D1 and D2?
Yeah, that's what I thought it was. I usually carry that in my head.
Substituting board policy 1.2?
It's 1.20.
1.20.
And we also have a 1.19.
Speaks of every one of them.
Which is our community engagement, so both of those, we'll take a look at and formulate to, to put in Neola.
So we also include 1.19, that will be considered by the, by the board.
May I ask a question?
Typically, in the bylaws, you focus on the board function and the, the naming of representatives, and whereas in the 9000s, where you talk about the structure of the committee, that would be more targeted to the general public. And it could get into the purpose of the committee, and the community process.
So I think 9130 would not be in conflict with your current, as I understand, as I understand your current policy, 1.2 or 1.19, I don't think 9130 would be in conflict with that.
Okay, um, Ms. Patrica?
Um, well, as I was reading 155, it just seemed like a more skeletal version of our 1.2. So, Mr. Pat, I'm sorry, what's your last name, sir?
Corbett.
Corbett.
Mr. Corbett, I hear what you're saying, that this is supposed to be more about the board's involvement in this, and the, the meat should be in the 9000s. I'm just not sure it's broken out that way in our policy, and I'd like to see our policy reflected in the 155 area, and then in the 9000s.
Let's use that number, we'll put your content in there, and take a look at it again.
And when you, when you see 9130, you'll be able to compare that to your 1.19 and 1.20, to make sure there's no conflict.
Yeah, it's, it's 1.20. 1.20, okay, thank you.
If we, Bruno also mentioned that it might also include 1.19.
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, I, I thought we were going through any of the ones that we had options to choose from, or are we not doing that?
No, we are going through, are you talking about, if you have a question regarding those, we're going, we're going to those specific...
No, I understand that, but then we're skipping over some that have parentheses, do we not?
If we're skipping over parentheses, then we need to address those. We need to, we need to say, either you're not gonna pick those, or you are, and...
Right, that's what I thought we were, each one that has a choice.
If they have a choice, but however, right now, on this particular one, we're looking at, are we replacing, versus looking at which checkbox to make, we're talking at...
We're talking about replacing.
Replacing that, so we're, we don't really need to check anything, because...
I understand that.
But Ms. Gittens talked about, there's, apparently, there may be some policies which we just skipped over.
Yes.
Which have some...
That's what I'm saying, that have selections.
Thank you, Ms. Gittens, and we'll come back to those, so thank you for making sure that we know that.
Which, which ones would those be?
Yes, do you have that, Ms. Gittens?
Uh, I'm just looking through here.
And thank you.
That's okay.
Oh, yeah, 154.
Yeah, I had just clicked on it.
154, we have to pick one.
Which was motions.
154, version one or version two. 154, version one is pretty simple. What does version two say?
Version two doesn't really reflect a lot of the things we currently do. Version two doesn't really reflect a lot of the things we currently do.
So version, version two gives you a lot of options. Version one gives you complete discretion.
So we have to, okay, so we've got one, if I may?
Go ahead, no, please, Ms. Gittens.
So we've got one that's just generic.
Yeah.
And then the second one has choices.
Which, which basically ought to be the way you do business now, specifically.
So the second ones that I see with the parentheses, I, in my opinion, we need to look at to say specifically what we're doing.
Unless you choose version one. Yes, you're correct. If you choose version one, then we delete version two in its entirety.
Correct.
I like version one.
You like version one?
Yeah.
Version one?
Version one.
Ms. Chivinelli?
I'm okay with one.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
Version one seems to be a consensus. We'll delete version two.
Thank you, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate that.
If you...
Okay, so...
If we had not spotted our staff in Koshokton, Ohio, would have caught it and sent it back and said, "You have to make up your mind."
You have to make a decision, right?
Okay, so, thank you for that. So we, that was 154. And then the 155, we're still going back to the 155, which are 1.20 and 1.19, looking at those and seeing how they correlate.
Substituting your 1.19 and 1.20 for our versions one and two.
Right, and then we'll get that back to us.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So now moving on, 1.56, there's no choices there. Uh, one point, uh, I'm sorry. Nope, there is a choice there. Nope, nope.
No, there's none.
Parliamentary authority, which is one point, I'm sorry, 1, 61. And then there's boxes there.
If I, if I may, I think that's pretty explanatory, that whoever the attorney is, do we have to state the attorney's name in the policy?
No.
Or can we just say, "School Board Attorney shall serve as parliamentarian," and then the parliamentarian has authority governing the Board, so, you know, Roberts rules.
We don't have to state the name.
Right. So I, my suggestion is just to take out the parentheses, say, "School Board Attorney shall," and then the last sentence.
Yes. Ms. Patrica?
Yeah, I had, I just needed some clarification and discussion amongst the Board on this. Just for us to clarify exactly what is the role of the parliamentarian. It's my understanding that the parliamentarian should be advising the chair when one of us is out of order, so that we don't need to call each other out of order. And then I'm not clear on exactly which Roberts Rules of Order we're following, because the, I know that there are the Roberts Rules for the larger body. And there we would expect to do official things, like instead of "so moved," we would say, you know, "I move to adopt the Superintendent's Recommendation Regarding Transportation." So those would be the official ones, which we've been told we need to do. And then at other times, we're told that we follow the unofficial rules for the smaller bodies. So I'm not clear on what rules we're supposed to follow. So if we could have clarification on that, then I think that the out of order stuff at the table would be much less frequent.
I'm going to go to Ms., yes, Ms. DePree Bruno, then Ms. Gittens.
Madam Chair, so, two things. Roberts Rules of Order is Roberts Rules of Order. Within Roberts Rules of Order, it does define certain things, leeways, that you may do when you have a smaller body. And then, of course, there's the Official Guide. So it's the same thing. It's the same book, same information. With regards to the parliamentary's, parliamentarian's role, it's not necessarily to direct the Board members, it's to advise the chair. The chair is the person who's responsible for the meeting and controls the flow and controls the members and the flow of the meeting. That is the chair's responsibility. The parliamentarian is there to provide parliamentary guidance based on the rules. And that's usually for our action meetings, because that's our formal meeting, where we do our formal motions. And then to provide guidance as necessary in our workshops and briefing with the understanding that those are not formal meetings, where we will take formal motions, which is what really Roberts Rules of Order guides.
And if I might add...
Thank you.
To that excellent explanation of the role of the parliamentarian, it is my understanding that that role is exercised only at the request of the chair. The parliamentarian does not offer his or her opinion without it being requested.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Tom. Ms. Gittens?
And that, thank you for saying that, because in my understanding of Roberts Rules of Order, anyone that is within the body can call for a point of order whenever they see fit. Then the chair, at the time, requests clarification from the attorney or the parliamentarian. But I would not agree to taking away the ability of any of us to be able to call for a point of order.
And if I might, when, and councillor will correct me if I'm wrong, when someone calls for a point of order, the chair may rule on it without asking the parliamentarian. The parliamentarian only would respond if the chair is not sure of his or her response to the question on the point of order. But the chair can rule on a point of order without the parliamentarian's opinion.
So some...
Go ahead, Ms. DePree Bruno.
So sometimes if the conversation continues, you'll hear me say, "Madam Chair, point of order has been called, go ahead and rule on point of order." That, that will be a reminder to the chair to make that ruling. So, if that clarifies.
Thank you.
And then the others, if I may as well, as a parliamentarian, is a very specific role. As your Board Attorney is also a specific role. So as I sit in this chair, I'm both your parliamentarian and your Board Attorney. So I give you legal advice or provide caution at times from a legal perspective as well. That's part of my responsibility.
That wasn't really a decision, as much as a discussion I wanted the Board to have to be more clear going forward. So I appreciate the, I appreciate you indulging.
So as far as this 1, 61, the number one, and I'm sorry, Ms. Gittens, you had stated...
Can I restate it?
Yes, please. Could you, please?
Just to read, the School Board Attorney shall serve as parliamentarian at all Board meetings, parliamentarian authority governing, et cetera, et cetera. So in that last paragraph.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Okay.
Thank, thank you. Okay, so on 162, there is also boxes to be checked. And I'm looking at every single one of them again because you said that. So there's boxes to be checked on here. Madam Chair? Go ahead, Ms. Gittens.
Doesn't that refer to the number of Board members that we have? As to what a quorum is, is defined by, we have seven, so it is defined by four, correct?
Yeah.
So we don't need to check any?
No, but we need to, we need to put that in.
Just, yeah, you'll fix that?
We need to do that. We'll put four in there and strike the first one.
Okay. That was, that one was easy.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Patrica.
Should we include four, four members shall be physically present at a meeting to constitute a quorum?
We address that, do we not, under voting in a later policy pact? This just says what a quorum is, and we'll get to your, we'll get to your points.
But I think statute requires a physical quorum in order for us to conduct any business. So we can't have a quorum unless there's a physical quorum.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, the quorum, yeah.
If, if the statute requires a physical forum, a physical presence, then we should put that in there.
Right.
But unless, unless there's a medical, and then they can...
Even still.
Be still required, a majority to be physically present, and then if somebody's out sick, they can call in or something like that, based on their...
So then we would need that in here. Thank you for good catch on that. Ms. Gittens?
Can we just add the word physically, before present, and be done?
That's what we've done.
You did. Yeah. That's perfect. Thank you so much for doing that. So, let's see, 163 is good. Nope. Ms. Patrica, you have something?
Yeah, so, my notes...
163.
My notes here say that our chair presides at all action and special meetings and all workshops. Our vice chair presides at briefings. And I believe we have a system of rotation for quasi judicial hearings. Should we include that rotation system in this policy? Because I know that there were some questions that came up about that recently. I didn't even know it existed, to be honest with you.
We do, that's correct. Ms. DePree Bruno?
My recommendation to the Board would be for the rotation system, include that in your protocols manual. But note that the vice chair presides at the briefing and note that there's a rotation as, you know, for the quasi judicial hearings.
Okay.
So are you talking about adding that to this?
Yes.
Okay. Can we work with you on the wording on that?
Yes.
Is there a consensus on the substance of what councillor suggested?
Yes. That way it's covered.
I just have a question.
Then we're going to need some, add some light.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question about the, the protocols. Dr. Bernier, please help me remember the name of that man who the Board wanted. Doctor whatever, Doctor who?
Doctor Agent Crable.
Thank you. Doctor Crable has recommended that as much of our protocols as possible be included in policy. So I, I just, I push back a little bit in terms of the rotation being in protocol as opposed to being in policy.
In point, Madam Chair, thank you. Point is well taken. The only thing I want the Board to remember as you're deliberating is that policy requires the specific rulemaking process. Your protocols, you can change anytime you want to. That's your process document, that's your guide. But your, whatever you put in your policy, if you're going to change it tomorrow, then you're going to have to go through that whole rulemaking process. So that's the only thing I'm going to give you to keep in the back of your mind.
And that was exactly why Dr. Crable recommended that it be in policy, was to set really standard, good, strong rules for good governance.
So then moving forward, we have the chair, the vice chair, and the quasi hearings. And you'll work with them on the verbiage, right, Ms. DePree Bruno?
Yes, but I'm, clarification from the Board. Do you want me to include that process in terms of the selection of the quasi judicial officer for our hearings?
I don't think, this does not state the process in here. It just says what, what is served. Is anybody else? I mean, so the rotation process would be...
Ms. Patrica requested that it be included in the policy. I need direction from the Board whether or not to include it in the policy, please.
I think that at a minimum, we should refer to the system of rotation.
Yeah, rotation, yeah. But not the whole process, just, I mean, rotation. Ms. Gittens?
Well, because to me, it's confusing if we mix policy and procedure. I mean, it's what the attorney was just saying, that if you generically say that there will be a rotation or something of that effect, but the specifics are what the process is.
Yes, it's not the, not the specifics, just the fact that it is a rotation.
There will be a rotation.
Yes, just the fact that it is a rotation. Does that sound right for everyone?
Now, this current, the current policy reads, "The vice chair shall provide all briefings."
That is correct.
Wait, that's the way to do it. Okay.
And if that person, if they're not there, either one's there, then the other one takes over.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Next number.
I have a, yeah?
Yes, please.
I have a question as to why you have 165, 92 on agendas, but I don't see any parentheses and choices unless I'm...
Anytime there are two options, there is a choice.
Generically, then, there's either the one document or the other.
Yes, that's correct. Or, or neither, unless it's required by law. And I don't have 160. What number are you looking at, 160?
I was looking at 165.
Okay, so can we...
165.
Before, before we go to 165, though, may we go to 164?
Yeah, but we need to go back to 163, because those changes don't reflect. The chair presides at all action and special meetings and workshops. The vice chair presides at briefings.
Which number is that?
163.
Chair provides at all action, special, and workshops. And I think you're going to work on that more with...
That's okay.
Vice chair presides at all briefings. And then the rotation.
So the, the change that you just suggested is the first sentence, "The chair shall provide, preside at all meetings and workshops." Is that what you said?
Action meetings and special meetings. And workshops.
Okay.
May I ask?
Ms. Gittens?
I, I thought that's what they were going to work on with the attorney, is that rotation and...
Well, no, what...
Or just, okay, so you're saying just to say generically here, the chair will preside at all action and briefing, I mean, action and...
Action meetings, special meetings, and workshops. Is that the one I heard?
Correct.
And that the vice presides at the briefing meetings, and then you'll add the part about...
Yes.
It's just, you know, rotation for the other.
Yes.
Just, action, workshops, action, okay, that's fine.
All right. Then we're back up to 164.
Then, yes, thank you.
Nothing.
164, does anybody have anything for 160? Ms. Patrica?
Should we have email in here? Notice of meetings by publication, by posting on the website, by mail to all persons who have made requests? That's not how we do it. We do it by email to all persons who have made requests.
And what number?
164.
Yeah, I'm just looking, trying to look at the...
Do we do D? Is D something we do?
By posting appropriate places, so that particular classes of persons to whom an intended action is directed may be notified. By posting appropriate places. Well, I would say probably yes, because do we not put, and, Dr. B, I'm going to ask you too.
Can we ask?
Yeah, like websites, don't we? And then community, and we were looking at even community news press to try to advance everything?
A, you've covered A and B.
Okay, that's A. Ms....
But what about the, the peach jar and stuff like that? Do they do that?
Well, that would still website. So Ms. Vaughn and then Ms. Gittens?
Yeah, I, I find D awfully subjective and something that might be argued by, by different groups. I mean, we have so many organizations. If that's in there, there can be an argument that an organization of five people that formed because they want chicken sandwiches every day in the cafeteria, whatever, like really small groups, well, we didn't get no, I mean...
I'll defer to...
That just, it just seems so arbitrary and subjective.
Ms. McNichols, who have much more recent experience than I regarding this, but I think these are all required by law.
So I'm pulling up the statute now. I did read that before, and it is required, but I want to pull the statute out so I can tell you exactly what it says. If you give me a moment while I continue to look for it.
Okay, and then I'm going to have Ms. Gittens go ahead and speak while you're looking.
Through the chair, through the superintendent, all down the line. Perhaps Ms. Schaefer would know how she, isn't she the one that does it? So would be able to answer how that goes out.
Ms., Dr. Bernier, is that, would that be, that's up to you?
I believe Ms. Schaefer could describe very accurately how she ensures that she complies with Florida statute regarding the posting of agenda, but I do believe there's some areas where Jen is following the traditional path of how that information is posted, from a legality point of view through Board docs. When it comes to additional or outside the box advertisement, if you will, that would definitely be the responsibility of another individual. But if you're interested in how Jen ensures the public compliance of our agenda postings in the work of the Board, be happy to have her speak to that briefing.
Well, may I, for the sake of time, Madam Chair, then suggest that this be one that's tabled until the attorney has time and everyone has time to look at what we do and the potential of what we could possibly do before we make this decision.
Yeah, because I know that, so if, Mr. DePree Bruno, did you get that answer regarding that sentence D? Because I have to agree with Ms. Vaughn on that one as well.
And I, and I agree with Ms. Vaughn on that one as well, but it is in the statute.
It is on the statute.
120.81 subsection D, notwithstanding any other provision of this chapter, educational units shall not be required to include the full text of the rule, et cetera. Hold on, let me find my right spot. I just lost it when I turned my head. Hold on, I'll find it for you.
Don't turn your head.
Give me one minute, please.
So if, because I know that...
Oh, I found it.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
It's under D, "by posting in appropriate places so that those particular classes of persons to whom the intended action is directed may be duly notified."
Okay.
Regarding, and this is...
Respectfully, we don't make this stuff up.
Well, no, and we wanted to make sure too, because I knew the last time we were all meeting, we wanted to make sure that everything was, it's by the law, it's the law, it's the law, so it's not us just coming up with this arbitrarily. It's the law. So Ms. Vaughn, do you have something else? And then I'll come to Ms. Mr. DePree Bruno.
Persons to whom an intended action is directed, so does that have to do with, like, vendors or, no?
She's got it.
I don't understand that part.
Let me make sure that I'm very clear. This is for rulemaking. So if you have a policy that's going to be affecting a particular class of persons, that's what this is discussing.
Madam Chair.
And this is the language in the statute.
Okay.
We are not about to say that every statute makes complete sense or is completely understandable.
So Ms. Patrica, Ms. Fisher, and then Ms. Gittens.
So I also had a question on the last paragraph. Are we there or not?
Are we, are we on 164?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to determine whether we could put by mail or email on C. And I think the attorney and Neola will need some time for that. But in addition, I have a comment on the last one, if I may, through the chair. Attorney DePree Bruno, do you know what is the legal requirement for notice for a special meeting?
For educational units, for school boards, 48 hours.
So, so should that 48 hours notice of special meeting, or at a minimum, include the language of due public notice?
So I believe that Neola's policy 165.3 discusses special and emergency meetings, but I don't know if that notice language is in there or not. I have to double check. But we can include that, if, you know, just to make sure that it's very clear.
And that, as I was reading through it, now, remember, I read these in order. So if it was lacking in 160, in the one we're on right now, it may have been clarified in 165.3, but I don't think there's anything wrong with having it clarified in both.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. DePree Bruno.
Madam Chair, with regards to Ms. Patrica's question about mail and email, it's also statutory language, that same place that talks about D requires by mail to all persons.
It does not allow for email, and this was written before email was considered a way of communicating, and hasn't been changed since then.
Okay, so email, there's no email. And then Ms. Fisher, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry, I thought you did. Ms. Gittens?
No, I, my same suggestion that we move on and, oh, I'm sorry. That we move on and let them, this be one of the ones that they work on and bring back to us. Because honestly, I believe we should discuss at some point, how else can we connect to our community? Or that maybe that's a discussion other than this.
Perfect, thank you. So... Where we're good with then? Because Mr. DePree Bruno is going to work with you on the 48 hours and the notice. So...
165?
165. Does anybody have anything with 165? 165 or 165.1, Ms. DePree Bruno?
Just for the board, I'm going to work with Neola as well on 164, just to clarify the language a little bit, because I want to make sure that it's clear it's for rulemaking process. So I'll work with Neola on that language. And 164.
Yeah, I have you down for that one, too. 164. Thank you. So 165 and...
I have a question.
165?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Patrica?
So for 165, at the very end there, it says, "All meetings of the board shall be open to the public except as provided by Florida statute. The order of business of any regular meetings shall include an opportunity for the public to address the board." This begs the question of what is a regular meeting? I think you're referring to an action meeting there, but I don't know the definition of regular meeting, because this is a workshop, which workshops are regularly scheduled meetings. So I think the argument could be made that a workshop is a regular meeting, and we do not allow public comment at workshops. So some clarification surrounding that language would be...
Yeah, but it's referring to a regular meeting per statute, which is going to be our action meeting. So we can clarify that.
Can we change, change the word from regular to action?
The statute specifically says regular, but we can, we can define that.
Understand that... I'm working with a public that will come to us and argue that regular includes regularly scheduled. So I think that if we can provide that clarification, then, then we, we are more clear with our public as they consume these policies, when they can expect to give public comment.
Well, I think we talk about regular meetings in 165.3. And if you look at the first sentence, "At least one regular meeting each month and may conduct other meetings, such as workshops." Therefore, workshops, just in the reading of this first sentence, is not a regular meeting. It is an other meeting, such as workshops, public hearings, special meetings, emergency meetings. But if you want further clarification, we can do that.
I think I have to agree, and if we can put that in parentheses, just like we have the other, I mean, you can put regular, but then parentheses, action, just like we have the other exempt, exempt meetings, agendas, regular meetings, how you have that listed on there. If we could just change that, the top, does any, Ms. Vaughn?
It'd be the first line as well.
I like the idea of action meetings where an action is to be taken, because we have had, on occasion, some special meetings, not regular or regularly scheduled action meetings, where we have taken an action because of timing and that sort of thing. So...
But that, that's covered on the special meeting?
Yes, that's correct.
That's covered under special meeting.
If you look at C also, that's agenda bylaws, regular meetings, special meetings, emergency meetings, that's all covered, as we're going to get to in just a minute.
But, yeah, my intent was, even though special meetings is there, that it may be confusing to people, because it is confusing. A regular, and as Ms. Patrica said, regularly scheduled, and yet, an action meeting could be a special meeting, but maybe it's not.
Again, regular meeting, special meetings are not regularly scheduled.
But special meetings can have actions.
And this doesn't say that they can't.
Okay, well, as long as that's covered for us and the public.
Yeah, we have to make sure everything is nice and clear. Ms. Gittens?
Well, couldn't we just put, if we're listing the types of meetings, and put in parentheses or something with it, public comment or not? So after the action meeting, you would say public comment. After workshop, you would not have it. And after briefing, you would have it. After special meetings?
If I might, we're going to, we're going to address that in 165.3 and...
Okay, okay. So if, if it's going to be addressed that way, then it needs to be somewhere, where we have action, public comment, this, no public comment, whatever.
Right. So if we good, so with this right here, for one point, I'm sorry, 165, just changing that regular and just putting, I mean, leaving regular, but just putting a action in parentheses, just like it does for the other, so it's all consistent? Is everybody okay with that? Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, I know, I mean, I think this should stay the way it is, because it's clear, and it's, it's in line with Florida statute 1001.372, which says regular meeting. Then, when you go on to 165.23, you have an explanation of special meetings, emergency meetings, and that. So it's all covered. So, I mean, we're not really here to reinvent the wheel.
Madam Chair.
I don't see what you're saying. It's 165.2 is the regular meeting, which tells you that. Ms. Gittens?
If generically, and according to statute, it's called regular meeting, why are we calling it something different? Why don't we say regular meeting to be in line with what everybody else said?
Okay.
And then you have an explanation that at a regular meeting, there are actions taken.
Which is on the other, coming up.
Which is on the other thing.
Right, so, you're right. So can I, and I apologize going back and forth like this, but are we okay with then keeping it as written by law, as regular meeting? And then it does show here on the other page what it is, because we were stating that we want to make sure that we are inconsistent, that we are consistent with what it stated with statute? Good. Ms. Patrica?
I will live with it. I think it creates confusion for the public, but I will live with it.
So we will keep it as it is for, based on law. Thank you. 165.1, Ms. Patrica?
So this is probably going to go over like a ton of bricks, but again, reflecting on Dr. Crable's suggestion, and looking at how other boards across the state and here in Lee County conduct business, most have protocols and rules in place that do not allow for the making of motions during board member comments. Most require a specified period of time notice to be given, not just to board members, but to the public. Specifically, if you look at the Board of County Commissioners Administrative Code, again, not a protocol, but an actual, it has the actual force of law. Their code is their law. If you look at AC 1-2 and AC 1-3, they require a specified period of time. Items, I mean, they are so, they are so specific and strict that you can't even bring up an item for discussion unless it is placed on an agenda for discussion. Y'all know that I'm on the FHSAA board, I'm on the FSBA board, and if, if the agenda is not amended at the beginning of the meeting with appropriate notice given ahead of the meeting to the rest of the body, a motion can't be made at all during the meeting. So I would ask us to consider, at a minimum, putting our protocols into policy here, and that would be a minimum. But really, the ideal would be to, to turn it over to Attorney DePree Bruno to look at how other boards do this, how the county commission does it, what AC 1-2 and AC 1-3 say, and then perhaps come back with a draft of what can be included in this policy.
Miss, thank you. Ms. Vaughn?
Yeah, actually, this appears to me like it will be a long board discussion on this, especially in light of tradition, history, whatever you want to call it, on the board. So in light of time restraints that we have today, I would suggest that we consider this, and at the same time, have our board attorney to report to us on how other boards do this, and move on to others that we might be able to finish today. If that makes, does that make sense?
I'm good with that. Ms. Gittens? Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
I mean, I agree, and yet, on the other hand, I believe there were earlier conversations and suggestions today of doing things, changing them to the way that we do it in Lee County. So if, to me, it's, if we're going to look at doing things generically the way other organizations and groups do it, then that would entail a lot of going back and doing that, but not picking and choosing that we do that on one policy and not on all the others. So, and previously, we were talking about another policy, and we replaced it with our policy. So I agree with Ms. Vaughn. That's a long conversation to decide, are we going to stick with the Lee County way, or are we going to go with this organization or that? So I suggest we move on and table this one.
Okay. So, because right now, I have with, with Mr. DePree Bruno, and 155, and 164, and 165.1, the three of them right now.
All right, I've got other comments under this one as well. So should I table those for the future discussion?
Yep.
Those might be helpful at this point, if we're talking about having us do some work with Mr. DePree Bruno. It might be helpful for us to address those questions or concerns as well.
So paragraph two, do we provide hard copies?
Yes.
Is that even something we do?
Agendas, yes, we do.
Yes?
We have in the past, Ms. Patrica.
Okay. Paragraph D, "Separate public comment is not permitted on items that are pulled from the consent agenda, because the public is invited to give comment," because it's part of, it was part of the consent agenda. So I don't remember what I'm talking about, because it was so long ago I wrote this.
Madam Chair, if it's a motion, is it, the public is allowed to make a comment?
Not on, not on a consent agenda poll. It's only those questions that we make at the end of the meeting that, that the public has not had notice on.
Right.
Which would be part of the reason why we would want to give the public more notice. But if a consent agenda item is pulled, we do not allow public comment on that specific item, because public comment at the beginning of the meeting is for all items for which the public had notice. And there was something about the way this was written that didn't reflect that. I can't remember right now what it was.
Ms. Vaughn?
Now, again, this, this is a huge discussion, and I, we're on the same thing, are we not?
Yeah, they just wanted to have just a little bit more insight.
Well, right, I heard that, but I'm respectfully disagreeing to hear anything more.
Okay, I get it.
Because, and it almost seems, well, it seems, not hypocritical, but not in keeping with Ms. Patrica saying, on one hand, it's not right to have things that are just brought up on the spur of the moment, and then this, which is going to be, I see, controversial among all of us, like, let's just, you know, even though we reviewed it on our own, let's just decide now, because it's, it takes a long time to come to a decision.
That's not what I'm saying.
Okay, that's how I understood it.
Madam Chair.
Not what I'm saying.
It sounds to me like this is part of a bigger issue, which needs to be addressed in its entirety. So perhaps having individual comments on each one at this point would be premature. Let us work with counselor and try to address this subject in its entirety, and bring back to you a number of proposed bylaws for your consideration, and then we can get into the weeds at that time. I think if that makes sense.
Yeah, that, that would be fine. And then that way, everyone has time to, to think about this one. Thank you. Okay.
Next number?
165.2, which is the regular meetings. Questions, Ms. Patrica?
Yes, so the end of that first sentence, "Except as shall be authorized by the board." I thought we were statutorily required to hold a minimum of one meeting per month. So how can we, how can, "Regular meetings of the school board shall be public and held at least once each month." How does that, how is that legal with, except as shall be authorized by the board?
First, I will offer an observation that I believe this language is directly out of the statute.
I don't see a statute attached to this.
I'm sorry, it's directed what?
I think it's out of the statute. But if it isn't, if it is, then the fact that it doesn't make much sense is not a surprise.
There is not a statute. On most of these, there was a statute attached to it. I don't see anything on this one.
Okay.
It has to have one, one meeting. Correct.
Yeah.
So doesn't, Ms. Fisher?
Yes, Madam Chair, but I think this indicates that you can't have more, which we do.
I think that was its intent.
Yeah.
Exactly. That's not how I read it.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, 165.3, anyone? Ms. Patrica?
165.3, paragraph B, "Special meetings are intended to be limited in specific... Does this mean that no good cause items can be added to the agenda?"
Not on special meetings.
What's the, what's the question again, Ms. Patrica?
Does this mean that no good cause items can be added to the agenda?
You're in paragraph B.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. DePree Bruno?
This is referencing a special meeting.
Correct, and that's what the special meeting is for, one item. Correct.
I understand, but if the superintendent comes, calls a special meeting for a specified purpose that's stated in the agenda, but new items come up, is he allowed to add those as a?
Action item?
Correct. I, I don't know. I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
There is, there is a statute that talks about good cause. I'll have to pull it up.
But is there, go ahead, Ms. DePree Bruno, I mean, Ms. Gittens.
I know, I know. But if it's a special meeting.
It's for a specific thing.
It is a specific thing, and I can recall us being in special meetings and people getting off topic, and attorney and others saying, we have to stay in line because this is a special meeting. And we, when it's put out to the public, we are having a special meeting on water. We can't talk about grape juice because we have notified the public, we're going to be talking about water.
And then also, on this page, if you please, we'll look down to the bottom as well. When it goes to the emergency meetings, there are options down there as well.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure that everybody's seen that, the options that are listed there. So, Mr. DePree Bruno, you're checking that one part out, correct?
Should I go on to C?
Yes, go ahead.
Is C statutory language because it talks about holding a public meeting in the superintendent's office, which we would never do?
Or, there's an or in there, is there not?
Yes.
Scroll up a little bit more and C, or in a room convenient to that office and regularly designated as the board meeting room.
I, I would like to strike the shall be, or in the office of the superintendent, or. I'd like to strike that. Shall be held in a room convenient to that office and regularly designated as a board meeting room.
How about if you just put, well, if you limit it to the board meeting room, then you eliminate the possibility of having it someplace else.
No, it says in a room convenient to that office and regular, oh, all right.
So in, in a room convenient to the superintendent's office, so you'd have to put that in there, I suppose.
And, Mr. DePree Bruno, did you have something to add to this one?
And I, and I understand that some of this language just sounds so archaic and just out of place, but a lot of this is statutory language. In 1,001.372, it specifically says, "Regular and special meetings of the district school board shall be held in the office of the district school superintendent, or in a room convenient to that office." Now, we don't have to include that in there, but I just wanted to point that out, that some of this language is directly from the statute.
Madam Chair, my point on that is, is as well is, I think back on COVID, we had special meetings that were digital. Is that mentioned anywhere? Because, in other words, we can't have a special meeting unless it's in the office or next to it. Can digital be added in there? Or is that somewhere else?
Mr. DePree Bruno?
Laws were suspended. Laws requiring a physical court were suspended at that time.
Mr. DePree Bruno?
So with regards to the school board, we cannot have digital meetings. Individual board members can participate by telecommunication so long as we have physically present four members of the board. For our board advisory committees, the law was changed to allow them to be able to participate through telecommunication.
But during the time that the law was suspended. During COVID, it was suspended, so it could very well say unless directed by law.
But I, but we get that order, so when we receive that, that we can do that, then that's, that sets precedence, right?
If I remember Neola, don't we, isn't there some, a policy with regards to COVID-19 or, don't recall, I, I thought I saw something on that.
Do special updates and special releases providing that kind of guidance during the two-year period that we've just experienced?
Right.
We'll have to double check. I, I think I remember seeing something along those lines, so we'll double check that and come back to you, Ms. Gittens, on that question.
Okay, so, right now, as it stands, so we're on, where are we here? I'm sorry, we're on C, which we just stated that that was.
Law, correct.
Are we going to leave the language in there again, in the office of the superintendent?
Yes, because it's, what it's.
It's in the law.
It's in the law, so yes, we are leaving it. And so, did you have anything else other than down, okay, so if you move down to the, Ms. Gittens, did you have something to do with that?
Well, I was just going to say that the next part, where there are parentheses.
Yeah, there's, if you go on the back page, too.
Right, but it takes us back to what they were going to be discussing as to how we notice meetings, and that was on the previous one.
Correct.
That they're going to talk about, so I would suggest we move on from this and let them discuss that.
So we are down to the emergency, thank you, Ms. Gittens, we're down to the emergency meetings, and there's the options down here. Ladies, if you can see that, please. Option one, note as required by state law, chosen, choose this adoption. Is there any, oh, is there, oh my gosh, I can't, can't even see it. This option, is there?
Should be if.
Option one.
Okay.
Because we have a daily newspaper, we would choose option one.
Right? Published in the newspaper. We have to do the.
But Madam Chair, that's what I thought they were going to be discussing, that we talked about in a previous.
No, I, I think what we were talking.
No, that was consent.
That's, that was, the question that we're talking about before was, that Ms. Patrica pointed out, was, and Ms. Vaughn, was that, that's in the public comment and this whole picture of that, but we're not talking about notice. That's very clear, but in the law. And, and she's going to determine whether or not the law says that, what we think it says.
But for the emergency meetings, they have to advertise in the newspaper.
That's what it says.
Yeah, that's what it says.
But if this is law.
Go ahead.
But we choose number one, but optionally can add, you know, from two, three, four, five.
Yes, but you have to have one.
One has to be.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I just said, yeah. That we have to choose one, but I would.
Yes.
You know, add at least a couple more from two through five.
What do you do now?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Gittens?
The thing is, if it's an emergency meeting, what if there are no newspapers and publications? So how do we, how do we communicate at that point? Anyway.
So if there's an emergency, emergency meeting.
You have a handle.
Ms. Fisher?
Thank you.
Yes, so that's why we have these other options here.
Right, right.
Posting a, a notice in the district's website.
That's what Ms. Vaughn just said.
District approved social media platforms, the front door of the district's main office. I mean, if it's an emergency, we're going to use whatever.
Correct.
Means we have to announce the emergency meeting.
So in this, number three, okay, so we know what number one is, number two, which number two would you want, which number three, which number four, and which number five? They're the same thing, but they're worded differently. We just have to pick which one they are and let them know. So number two. You see the ones for number two? Actually, number two has three boxes that you can choose from. Which one is a preference of the board, please, Ms. Fisher?
Number, number, number two, if you're on number two, is that right?
Yeah, well, number one, we know, we have number one.
So if you choose number two, then the second and third options there are part of that. But if you don't choose number two, the first one, then you're not going to be choosing the second.
I apologize.
Yeah, I say no, not number two.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes, so I think this work has already been done, and it says here, note, you know, these are optional methods of providing due public notice of an emergency meeting, and you may choose all, some, or none of these options. So I think depending on the emergency, we would make the decision at that time. So I would leave this available.
I see that.
The above. Okay. Then we're going to need an or in there somewhere. But if we're going to leave them all, we're going to, we, we need an or.
Or there, or, sorry to say, this lady's, Ms. Mary, if you go to the second page, there's the option two.
No, not. I understand that, so.
So your preference was the option one?
What this, what this bylaw has done is to create a situation where.
Turn your mic on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where any situation could be addressed depending on the situation at the time. So they give you a selection of options to use depending on what the emergency situation is. If it's a big storm, I mean, they said you can post on the door of, of every school, I, you know, just to get the word out. But, but I don't think we should limit ourselves because we don't know what the situation could be.
But the preface, the sentence leading into that list of items says, "Shall attempt to provide," which means we are required to, to try to do all of these. So therefore, we need an or in there because we can't, I mean, what are the circumstances under which we would post a notice on the county courthouse door? I can't imagine that circumstance, but we, we shouldn't be requiring our staff to do that every single time we have an emergency meeting. So we need an or in there, otherwise, we have to try to do all of these every time we have an emergency meeting. Make sense?
Respectfully, through the chair, may I respond?
Yes, please.
Yeah, and, and I don't think that's what this is saying. It would depend on the emergency situation. This is available to us. We don't have to do it all. We can do whichever ones would be reasonable at the time. Madam Chair?
Good, Ms. Gittens, go ahead, please.
The verbiage is, "Shall attempt."
Okay, I have a suggestion on.
Not do, so.
If you scroll up. All right. "The board shall attempt to provide immediate public notice of all emergency meetings as follows. One, publish a notice in a newspaper. Period. In addition, the following are optional methods of providing due public notice."
Well, and, I'm sorry.
"In addition, the following are optionable, optional methods of providing due public notice of an emergency meeting." In addition to number one. So I've just added, I've added the language basically of the note.
And may I finish? Okay. Attempt is saying that we will try.
Yes.
And we have the list, so therefore, we will try.
Right.
Whichever one works.
Yeah.
We shall attempt to do any of these. And the or is kind of a, you know, not said because if we try this and we can't, we're going to try the next one until we are successful. So I, I believe that shall attempt is all we need to have in there.
So I'll do our best to make sure everything gets out there. Well, however, we have to do it.
Yep. By any means necessary.
Now, I'm, I'm, I'm good with it, although I could live with posting on the county courthouse door and the front door.
It's your job.
Hey, I'm not going to be on the board. You're going to have to pay me big time for that. But no, ser, but, but seriously, there's some, and it does, that you can tell it's old because it talks about the radio station, and then later, the broadcast media outlets. I think more people are likely, they don't use streaming.
That's option two.
Right.
And, and anyway, I think this gives viable.
Options.
Alternative, so options. And that's, I mean, that's all we can do.
So.
Okay.
So we're getting rid of the one, and you have that. Is everybody good with that? Are we good? Thank you.
Board members?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
It is three minutes to five.
Hard stop.
Okay.
Hard stop.
So we are at recess. That's where we're at, recess. How poetic is that? Yeah, so we are at recess, the 165.4. So at this time, we will recess and come back to start off with this one. And in the meantime, Ms. DePree Bruno, 10155, 0164, 165.1. You have those three?
I have those three, and I also have 163 in terms of.
I'm sorry, which one? 16?
163 regarding the, some language on the rotation.
Yes.
Not including process, but some language.
Yep. Language on that.
And, and board members, just for your consideration and keep in the back of your mind, these are about 61 policies that are your bylaws. We're going to be going into a third meeting to review the bylaws because we're not finished. The board directed that these policies be completed by May 2023, so I want to keep, I want you to think about that. If we go past May 2023, that's okay, but I want the board to be aware of that because you did instruct me specifically to complete this by May 2023, and we are on our third workshop just on bylaws.
Well, I think it's important, too, because we need to have, there's a lot of these, and we need to have discussion. We can't just, so, yes, I, I hear what you're saying. Yes, please.
Your instructions to the attorney indicated not only to complete it on time, but on budget. When you go past the number of contractual hours, the overtime provision kicks in. And we're here as long as it takes. The board just needs to understand that there may come a time when you are in overtime, and it's going to cost more money.
Miss, thank you. Ms. Patrica?
And part, part of the issue, too, is taking an hour for a half-hour agenda review. While you guys are sitting here waiting for us to get through agenda review and health services, that's 45 minutes that we're paying you for that we're not even utilizing. So it's not just going along on policies, it's also going along on other parts of the agenda.
Thank you, and thank you so much for today. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Chivinelli?
And I think that's a very good point that Ms. Patrica just made. I don't understand why they weren't first, because they had to sit here and wait and endure that. Why weren't they first? And then, and then we could address the other two later. Items.
I, I, I can't.
I would recommend that they would be first next time. Thank you. Or the only thing, correct. Thank you.
Got it. I think, because we added them, but I, I hear what you're saying. Thank you. I will take that hit. Ms. DePree Bruno?
So the next workshop, which will be the first workshop in September, we will continue on with policies, the bylaws. However, at this point, I think we will also have some of the policies that staff has been working on, which will also come before you. These are not our fire policies. We're doing the regular process for our fire policies, so I want you to be aware. It will be in September.
Thank you. Okay, ladies, does anybody have anything for?
That's all right.
Did you have something to say?
I was just going to say that since there's only 14 left, that perhaps we could review that before our next workshop and have specifics for the ones that have parentheses where we have to make choices, if we can come prepared with our choices already and the definitive behind it.
And I think that's a good idea, and I know we've had these books for a month to look at these. So, yes, that's a great idea for us.
Review.
Yes, it was a long. That's, that's a great idea, Ms. Gittens. So let's try to make sure that we review, have all our questions in mind of what that may look like, so we can move forward with this. And Dr. Bernier, you had something to share?
Just something really quickly. We'll take our advisement, but with a hard stop at 5:00, I don't know how, right now, I believe, we'd still be reviewing policies with Neola, and you wouldn't, you would not have had a board briefing. So I'm more than happy to shift the agenda. We can move board briefing to the end if Neola's coming, but understand the risk that you may only get it in terms of a board update. That's one thing you just need to consider, and I, you know, I can get further directions, I test base reviews the week goes on. And lastly, I just think it's really important that we, we, we read some, I read something into the record, and I'm sorry that Neola left. I wanted to do that while he was still present. I stepped out of the room briefly just to get a drink of water, and when I came back, I may, I heard the comment. I may, I heard the comment about the ridiculous requirements of the state. We've had situations with people presenting to us before.
Yes.
Where that led to some feedback to all of us regarding our ability to comply and comport with law. We have requirements from the state that had been passed by our state legislature and signed by our governor. We have no opinion on those laws other, as elected officials, other than that we're sworn constitutional officers, and we are required to enforce them. That was an independent person, independent of this board, who made that comment, and I apologize to the gentleman who just left because I wanted to do that while he was still in the room, but I can't allow it to go into another day or into next week because I'm sure we would get feedback if we were not clear in our response.
No, thank you for saying that, and that's why throughout the policies, it was referred to what was the law, and that's what we have to stick with, whatever the law is. So we do understand that it is based on law, and we will stick with the law. So thank you. Is there anyone who has anything for good of the order? Seeing nothing for that? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you so very much, and it sounds like it's raining, so be safe.